Good evening. Well, welcome to the February 8th, 2021, meeting of the Arlington County Planning Commission. The Planning Commission advises the county board on matters pertaining to planning and development in the community. I'm Jim Lantelme, the Chair of the Commission. This is the first of two evenings scheduled for our public hearing. Tonight, we'll be hearing the proposals for changes to the residential parking permit program. At our Wednesday, February 10th, meeting, we will hear proposals to authorize the placement of non-commercial banners on streetlight poles in the public right-of-way located in the Boston Business Improvement District. There'll be an information item on updates to the community energy plan, and a proposal to designate an Arlington Historic District overlay for the Mount Salvation Baptist Cemetery. If you're here for those items, note that those will not be discussed tonight. Some items that I'm required to share now. For the safety of our staff and residents, we are holding this meeting virtually, as we did for our earlier hearings this year. Welcome to our commissioners, county staff, applicants, and community members who are all joining us remotely. We are legally authorized to hold this virtual meeting based on the governor's executive orders, legislation adopted by the Virginia General Assembly, and the county board's continuity of operations ordinance that was adopted in March of 2020. Before we begin, I have a few specifics to orient everyone to our virtual environment. Today's meeting is available as a broadcast with closed captioning on Comcast Xfinity Channels 25 and 1085, Verizon FiOS Channels 39 and 40, and the county website. Audio of today's meeting is available via phone. If commissioners, presenters, or speakers lose internet connection during tonight's meeting, please reconnect to us by phone. I understand you can use the number provided in the team's invite, which is 347-973-6905, with a conference ID of 291-323-691-Poundside. And registered speakers have received Ms. Johnson's telephone number in their speaker registration confirmation. For other presenters and speakers tonight joining us through Microsoft Teams, please keep your phones and devices muted until you're called upon. Please turn off the sound to any other devices around you to minimize interference. When you're called upon to speak, you must unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon that's located in your team's meeting command bar. The moderator, me, or Mr. Wood, does not have the ability to unmute you. If you're dialing in by phone, press star six to unmute. Commissioners, if you wish to be recognized to speak, please use your hand raise function or turn on your video, unmute your microphone to show your interest, and I'll call on you in order. For public speakers, you will be called on by our clerk, Ms. Johnson, at an assigned time. Pre-registration to speak at today's hearing was required. We're not able to accommodate additional speakers. Public comment will take place within the same timeframes as we would provide in an in-person setting. Speakers will have three minutes to comment as individuals and five minutes to speak if representing an organization. A speaker timer will be displayed on screen by the clerk. If you are dialing in by phone and unable to see the screen, we will provide an audible warning when 30 seconds are remaining. You'll be muted when your time has concluded. The meeting chat is active for presenters or commissioners who need technical assistance only. Do not use the meeting chat for discussion, for public comment, for questions about agenda items, or any requests for more information. All public comment must be shared verbally for the record during the assigned public testimony period. Lastly, this is a public forum. Tonight's meeting will be recorded and posted to the county website. All information associated with today's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act requirements. Now we'll move on to our agenda items. Madam Clerk, please call our items.
Good evening. Our first and only item for the evening is a consideration of whether to recommend the county board adopt an ordinance to repeal, reenact, and recodify Article 8 of Chapter 14.2, the Residential Permit Parking Program, which is on the agenda for the evening. We have Stephen Grimm and staff to present this item this evening from DES.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Grimm, are you ready to go?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, excellent. Well, thank you very much for meeting with us on this topic again. We are here to request that you advise the county board to adopt the manager's recommendation for changes to the RPP program at its February 20th meeting. Given our prior meetings, I will be brief in my description of the proposed program and how it compares to the current program. I will also highlight the changes that we have made to our proposal since the December advertisement, and which is in the draft board report that you received before this meeting. In terms of eligibility, the proposed program expands the range of households that would be able to petition for and potentially join the program. It excludes households built by special exception, but would make all households living in buildings built by right eligible to petition and join the program, regardless of their housing type. The proposed program would also alter the maximum number of permits that a household can receive. You see two options in our board report. Option A, which is our recommendation, is the one described here, where households with any off-street parking would be limited to two permits, or two annual permits, including the Flex Pass. We have made an alteration to our recommendation since advertisement, such that the maximum for households with no parking of any kind would be able to receive up to four permits. We have made this change to remove potential burden on households that have absolutely no off-street parking and multiple vehicles, perhaps because the household has multiple unrelated adults living together, and it also reduces the chance of more curb cuts being installed around the county. The board, as you'll recall, amended the advertisement language so that they would also be considering a program in which all households would continue to be able to receive four annual permits, and so that is option B in the board report. In terms of visitor parking, we keep the two kinds of permits and passes for visitors that currently exist in the program, the short-term visitor passes and the Flex Pass. Landlords would continue to be able to receive one pass per home. We would also introduce short-term parking that would be paid using Park Mobile or Easy Park. One thing I want to add, because this came up at the joint work session, just to clarify, Easy Park is not a cellphone app. It is a physical device that hangs within the vehicle. So there have been a lot of discussion about the ability for somebody to go and just reset the device or to reset their time after two hours. We recognize that that's a concern, but I want to point out that somebody couldn't simply do that from, you know, their destination by phone. They would have to physically return to the vehicle to make that adjustment in the time. In addition to the addition of short-term parking, we would also standardize our Good in All Zones program, standardize our temporary permits for construction contractors, continue to exempt car-share vehicles, and then add one permit per school employee up to a cap for each school facility. We would also allow employees of group homes located in RPP zones to get an RPP permit. The proposed program would remove subsidy for the program and recover all program costs with fees. In the option where households with off-street parking could obtain two permits and households without off-street parking could receive four, you see that the annual pass range is from 40 to 65 for the first three as before. In order to accommodate the fourth permit in this revised proposal, we've set the fourth permit at $150, which is comparable to the fee charged by other neighboring jurisdictions for that many permits. In other words, when they tier their pricing up, this is comparable to what's charged for, you know, that fourth permit and up. For the scenario where all households would continue to be eligible for up to four annual permits, we've made a modified recommendation based on what the board amended to the language at its December hearing. That amendment conceived of households with off-street parking paying more than households without off-street parking for a third and fourth permit. But we're proposing that if the program, if the board chooses to go with allowing four permits for all households, then we would recommend pricing be the same for all households. And the pricing of that, you can see here. We made this modification because while charging households with off-street parking more is logical, in practice, we feel that the demand management benefit of charging the households with off-street parking a few dollars more for the annual passes does not justify the resources needed to maintain data on who does and does not have off-street parking and the extra customer service that we'd need to provide in order to explain these differences to the customers in the county. You'll see that the prices for the first three annual permits are lower than advertised because we would be selling more permits. Also, we have correspondingly lowered the Good in All Zones and other annual permits, which have been tied to the cost of that first resident permit. We have kept the 50% discount for qualifying low-income households, and we have added to our administrative, our proposed administrative guidelines, an additional Veterans Administration Pension Program for low-income veterans to the list of programs that would qualify someone. And that was based on a recommendation made at the December Housing Commission meeting. In terms of other items covered in our board report, with the petition process, you'll recall that our proposal removes the out-of-area test and raises the occupancy threshold to 85% in order to receive restrictions. Also, a petition must have signatures from 80% of the households on the petitioning block. We would allow permits and passes from two zones to be valid on streets where boundaries meet so that people who live at the edge of a zone get, you know, approximately the same range of places to park as their neighbors who live further into the center, toward the center of the zone. We would limit customization of restrictions to the hours of enforcement. We grandfather existing restrictions, though we would add the two-hour parking and the boundary streets condition that I mentioned here. A change since the advertised proposal is that in our administrative guidelines, we have simplified the process for splitting zones. That has been, up to now, a multi-step process that some residents have said make it basically impossible to split zones, to remove issues with people driving from one end of a zone to then park, you know, say, near a school or a community center or like a business or something, and they're still living in the same zone, which is not really in the spirit of the program. So again, our request is for you to advise the board to approve the manager's recommended changes to the RPP program. We look forward to public comment and your questions. Again, I know that I made this presentation a bit shorter in order to move us along to comment and questions from you all and discussion. There's much more information in the draft board report, and I'm happy to go into more detail with you. But with that, I will say thank you and end for now.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. Madam Clerk, do we have any public commenters tonight?
Yes, we do. Let me pull up that screen. Okay, as you can see, we have eight speakers this evening. We'll start with our three-minute speakers. Our first speaker is Robert Douglas. He will be followed by Dema Hakura.
Welcome, Mr. Douglas.
Hello there. Thank you. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Thank you very much. So I am a 20-year resident of Aurora Highlands. I've been here forever long enough to have talked to a lot of the old-timers about what the neighborhood looked like before we had parking everywhere in the neighborhood. And our civic association has rejected Mr. Grimm's proposal altogether. But I'd like to talk about a couple of aspects of it, and especially the pay parking aspects. I think he's addressing, in a few of the recommendations, the reduction in passes, and we don't believe that the reduction in passes is necessary for any reason other than to make more space for people to park in the neighborhood and maximize pay parking revenue to Arlington County. It's not going to add any value to our neighborhood. There's no appetite for it from anyone who lives in the neighborhood. There's, I just, I see a big disconnect. And in his proposed, his new purpose and intent of the program, he comments on a couple of things. The first, he says that he believes it's going to manage the demand for residential parking in a fair and equitable manner between residents, and we believe that it really introduces non-residents and non-residential, non-resident vehicles into our neighborhood, which is not what anybody really wants in a residential neighborhood. The parking manager claims that he has the ability to reduce the volume and impact of non-residential and non-visitor vehicles. However, we believe that any and all cars and trucks can enter the neighborhood and park where they want by right, so he can't really do what he proposes to do, which is to reduce the volume and impact of the non-residential and non-visitor vehicles. Lastly, he promises in this purpose and intent that we will be protected from unreasonable burdens in gaining access to our residents. But if paid parkers have decided to fill the block and my wife decides to go to the grocery store and comes back, she might have to park a few blocks away from my house because all of the other parking spots are filled. Anyway, in closing, this pay parking for Aurora Highlands and any other residential neighborhood which is close to a commercial corridor is going to be a disaster for the neighborhood. It wasn't, it isn't asked for, it isn't, there's no reason to do it other than to maximize revenue to Arlington County in some sort of pay parking scheme, or perhaps it's some deal that they cut with Amazon that we weren't made aware of before they approved it. Thank you again for your time tonight, and I encourage you to reject this proposal altogether.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas.
Hi, my name is Dema Hakura. I'm a resident of Courthouse Clarendon for 28 years. I'm here to urge you not to take any action on the proposed changes for the residential permit parking program at this time. Outreach to the community has been short-circuited because of the pandemic, and thus was totally inadequate. You have frozen this program for the past couple of years. Doing so until we can have proper community input outweighs the harm of implementing flawed and wrongly-premised changes that decrease the quality of life, which staff is recommending based on a poorly drafted and biased survey. Also, staff has completely ignored the original purpose and intent of the program, which is clearly written in the original preamble. In short, the program aims to reduce vehicles, traffic, noise, pollution, litter, and crime in neighborhoods and preserve peaceful neighborhood living in an urban environment. The changes proposed do the exact opposite. They decrease the quality of life for Arlington neighborhoods. The county keeps talking about the no-car diet and Vision Zero. Then we see parking ratio requirements decreased for new developments. And now county staff wants to add changes to the RPP that would increase the pool of eligible parkers and leads those living in nearby high-risers and frequenting businesses in the area to search for parking at metered parking spots within their neighborhoods. This does not make sense, particularly at this time when we do not know what the ramifications of the pandemic will have on people's behavior. May I suggest that instead, keep the program changes on hold until normal life resumes post-pandemic? Or even better yet, postpone considering changes for another five years, when there can be a proper engagement process with the community and a better understanding of any changes to patterns of work-life behavior that result from this past couple of years. This is not the time to reduce the quality of life for Arlingtonians. I really would urge you to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hakura. Our next speaker is Mr. Polk, Polkowski. Mr. Polkowski, you're on mute. Are you still there? Why don't we then move on to Mr. Held? Oh, here he is, Mr. Polkowski. You're on mute. We're not hearing you.
Can you take your buds off? And unplug them? Okay, Jim, can we go to Mr. Held, please? Can we go to the next speaker?
We're not hearing you. We'll move on to Mr. Held while Mr. Polkowski tries to get his technical thing fixed. Mr. Held, are you ready?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Beautiful. Good evening, members of the Arlington County Planning Commission. I'm Alex Held. I'm a resident of Columbia Forest and board member of the Frederick Forest Condominium Association. In my three years of service on our condo board, one issue that has continued to negatively impact the quality of life for our 250 residents is parking. While our community manager has taken essential steps to maximize the availability of off-street parking within our community, because our community was developed in 1947 under different parking requirements, we simply do not have enough off-street parking to meet the demand of visitors and residents with multiple vehicles. Thus, many in our community utilize the on-street parking along South 10th Street and portions of South Frederick Street. Because of the adjacent restrictions in Columbia Forest, competition for this unrestricted space is fierce, affecting the quality of life for many of the residents in multifamily units who need an additional vehicle for work, or are a two-car household, or even those who wish to have visitors to complete, to come, you know, to come to their home to complete work, or for a simple dinner party. We applaud the county staff for developing the current RPP proposal, and as a community, welcome the ability to petition for RPP restrictions as well as the inclusion for visitors to utilize RPP spaces for two hours paid. We feel that all members of the public should be able to access the public right-of-way, not simply those that live in a particular housing type. Understanding that space is a finite resource in our community, we feel that the current proposal allocates this finite resource in the most equitable way possible, and we urge the Planning Commission to recommend the proposal as written for approval to the county board. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to participate today. And I also submitted some comments via email earlier. I hope you all got those as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Held. Our next speaker, we have scheduled, is Mr. Asimakopoulos. Are you available?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. We can hear you.
Excellent. Thank you. First, I would just like to take a quick second to recognize Ms. Johnson. She gave me a call today to make sure everything was set up for me. I was having some difficulties, and I just can't say enough good things about her. She was very professional. I've had an opportunity to speak with a handful of people over the last couple of years within the county, and she is by far top-notch. So thank you, Ms. Johnson. But, thanks, thanks again. But to get on to the topic at hand here, look, there are so many reasons not to support these RPP changes. I don't support them, and neither, I believe, does an overwhelming majority of Arlington residents. This really is nothing but an opportunity for negative visibility for the county board, which is not needed right now with everything going out, you know, everything else going on with the closed schools and the poor vaccine rolls. This is just something that needs to be deferred to a later time until it can be better, better staffed, frankly. I would also say that every neighborhood is different and has different needs, particularly for parking. Aurora Highlands is not Arlington Ridge, even though they're right next to each other. It's not Crystal City or Penrose or Cherry Dale. Each is a unique neighborhood with different needs, and this appears to be a one-size-fits-all approach that just won't support, you know, it just won't support what you're trying to do. And finally, for those who suggest that the street in front of my house in my neighborhood is not mine, though legally accurate, it couldn't be further from the truth. When the trash truck comes on Fridays and trash and debris get dropped out of the back of the truck, cans are on the ground and whatnot, I'm the one out there picking up the trash and throwing it away. I'm the one out there watching out for cars coming when the kids in my neighborhood are in front of my house on my street. You know, I'm watching out for them as they're playing. And I really find it, I find it difficult to think that now I'm going to be asked to have all sorts of people parking in front of my home, or the potential for people parking in front of my home, the potential for me to have to park several blocks away. I've lived in a big city before. I lived in Bayonne, New Jersey once, and I've had, I've lived this, where you have to walk blocks to get back to your home. And the fact that I'm now going to be asked, after paying as high of taxes as I do, to now pay for the Flex Pass so that I can park in front of my house just seems unreasonable to me and unnecessary. to me, and unnecessary. If parking really is an issue in Arlington, I think it needs to be looked at neighborhood to neighborhood, and dealt with that in that manner. But this one-size-fits-all approach, just, I can't support that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now move on to our five, like, I see Mr. Polkowski has come up again. Do you, are you able to get your sound going? We still can't hear, I can see your lips moving, but I can't hear you. Yeah, we're sorry, but you're still not coming through. Yeah, we can't hear you, we're sorry. Move on to Mr. Staples.
Mr. Chairman?
Representing, yes, Mr. Scholl, Commissioner Scholl?
Could you have Mr. Polkowski call in the number? Commissioner Peterson recommended that, I don't know if you saw that in the chat?
Right, yeah. Madam Clerk, do you think you could contact Mr., or give him a number that he could then reach you with, and try to figure out how, get him to come in by phone?
Sure, we can do that.
Okay, and then meanwhile, maybe we can allow Mr. Staples to give his comments. You're representing the Boston Virginia Square Civic Association?
That's correct.
Okay, do we have the timer up?
Yes, we do.
Okay, yeah, you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. I am speaking on behalf of BVSEA, and y'all can hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, we trust that you've read our letters, so I'll focus on feedback from Transportation Commission and several critical elements in our letter. We found that our positions were well-understood by the Transportation Commission, and we appreciate their comments. I do have a couple of follow-up notes. First, I heard our commissioner comment that not all of BVSEA was represented in our position, which was extremely disappointing. We're following up to make sure we've scoped the gamut of BVSEA residents, but I would like to note that we've already had meetings on the uncomfortable talks about where multifamily and single-family meet, and it's clearly an important solution to solve. We don't have the answers, but we are having the conversation, and our letter reflects those discussions. I do want to note that BVSEA, to anyone listening, has an open-door policy in that any resident is open to attend or join and voice their short-term needs or long-term wants, or to volunteer or voluntold for any one of our efforts. Second, for the commissioners that voted for moving forwards with metered parking with RPP zones, we sensed anxiety and resentment later, in today's terms FOMO, fear of missing out, particularly so in getting the data. We would like to know that metered data is already being collected by neighboring jurisdictions and within our current metered areas. Perhaps a data-sharing agreement can be brokered with them, or even possibly through ParkMobile itself to better assess how metered parking may be applied further within the county, a statistical modeler's dream. Fear not on missing out, instead learn from our neighbors and better than one with a management approach that moves policy forward. Of our letter, I would like to point three things. On metered parking, from the Transportation Commission, we heard, "cart before the horse, one size does not fit all," and we agree with these assessments. There are issues from implementing that we expect to occur, there's also unexpected nuance issues, and there's no strategy in place for addressing any of this. Have the county dedicate staff to study the data, identify hot blocks, boundary blocks, misuse blocks, utilization percentages, and identify strategies and timeframes for managing various scenarios. This hall has to be done before the metering can be approved. The current proposal comes off as writing a blank check to ParkMobile to charge parking transaction fees while we, as a county, work out a management strategy for the residential streets. We can do better. For the partitioning percentages, while they should lightly affect us, we can't make heads or tails of the changes to percentages, and have yet to find someone who may want to petition that can articulate a position. We still wonder if it may inadvertently affect the underserved. Further, we'd like to note that an 80% petitioning signature seems awfully high. For anyone that has walked streets for signatures, even be able to reach 80% of the households is an achievement, let alone getting signatures from all of them. Maybe the county could throw a block party. Whether everyone is there for the party or yell at the partiers, at least someone would have a chance to talk with them about petitioning for RPP. On the boundary parking, we disagree with the proposal to allow neighboring zones to park in each other's boundary blocks. With our own example, of which there are many like this, in our Zone 7, which is a block wide east of WNL and down to FDIC, it would allow all of Clarendon Zone 6 to park in it. We need a better solution to managing the boundary blocks. For all this, we request that you either send the policy back for another review cycle, or you strike the metered parking from the policy, and also address other changes as outlined in our letter. And finally, just as a procedural note, with the online environment, it's important to note that you're likely missing out on some public commentary. This is because of the, today's virtual process requires us signing up by 5:00 PM the prior day, different from just walking up. And I know, even myself, at transportation, I was registered as number five to speak, and yet, there was nobody that spoke that day because we all registered at that timeline. So consider that, that there may be voices missing in this. Thank you for your time and consideration in these matters.
Thank you very much, Mr. Staples. Our next speaker is John Carton from the Lion Village Citizens Association. John, take it away.
My name is John Carton, I'm president of Lion Village Citizens Association. Much of Lion Village is covered by the Zone Permit Parking Program. We are located next to Clarendon and Courthouse commercial areas, as well as two metro stations. The current RPP has been successful in protecting our streets from being inundated from cars seeking a place to park. We see no reason to change it. If there are a few perceived problems in other areas of the county, then the county should tweak those areas, but don't ruin it for everyone else. The proposed changes to the plan seem to go against all the stated goals of the original plan. We have spoken with a number of civic associations that feel the same way as we do. The program is working now, so we don't see a need to change a good thing. If it needs to generate more revenue to cover the costs, then raise the price and leave it at that. Allowing two-hour parking is a bad idea. The staff has indicated that the county would be unable to enforce it. Once the word gets out that the county can enforce, can't enforce it, it would forego paying to park in the commercial areas and head for the neighborhoods. Residents would be irate when they see people parked on the streets for long periods of time, and have no way to enforce it. The current system works fine. To park in a zoned area, cars have to display the zone permit. Residents can spot violators and call them in. This change also is an equity issue, because the burden of two-hour parking would be greatest on those living closest to the commercial areas. Their streets would be inundated with cars looking for lower-cost parking, or parking for free. We have many streets that intersect with Wilson Boulevard, and are literally steps away from the commercial areas in Courthouse and Clarendon. Many of the residential streets are narrow, and not designed to be full of parked cars. These are what we call yield streets. Space is needed for cars to pass each other. The neighbors know this, and park accordingly. If instead these streets are full of parked cars, they'll be harder to drive on those streets, streets, creating unsafe conditions for pedestrians, bikes, and cars, and for emergency vehicles responding to calls. This is a safety issue. Don't increase the percentages necessary to participate. It is currently set at a reasonable level. Parking levels are lower now because of the pandemic, and we will see how soon they come back, but eventually, it will happen. So raising the percentages makes it too unrealistic at this point. Trying to create more parking runs counter to the county's efforts to encourage residents to have a car-free diet, to walk more, to bike more, and use scooters. The parking ratios in new buildings in Clarendon have been lowered in recent years. More development is in the pipeline, so there will continue to be more pressure on parking. We don't want to increase traffic and the number of cars, so why are we trying to create more parking in the neighborhoods? To park cars from those buildings, the new buildings, in Clarendon Courthouse, and in Clarendon Courthouse, there are large parking garages that are underutilized. That's where these cars should be parking, not in the neighborhoods. So in conclusion, we encourage the planning commission to recommend that the county board take no action on the proposed parking proposal. Too many of the proposed changes are flawed and not ready to implement. The number-one flawed change is the proposed two-hour parking, with no way to enforce it, or for residents to be able to tell which cars are in violation. This is just asking for trouble. The current residential parking program is fine, so please don't change it. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Carton. Our next speaker is Pete Durgan from Penrose. Ms. Durgan, are you available?
Yeah, I'm here, how do you do? How's everybody?
Very good. Your time is starting.
Alrighty. So I signed up because residential parking permits are a hot topic in the Penrose neighborhood. About eight years ago, Penrose Square and Santa Park Apartments were open, and garage spaces required a fee. Residents preferred to park on the neighborhood streets rather than pay for garage space, so they would park on the streets, use the buses to go to work, and leave their cars for weeks at a time, parked in front of single-family houses. We were the definition of a parking lot. Cars were blocking driveways and crammed together as tight as they could be. Single-family home residents couldn't find any street parking near their houses, until the permit parking was put into place. We do not want that removed. We're happy to see that those things will stay. I did a quick survey of the neighborhood a couple of weeks ago, and I'm in the process of compiling the results. The survey was sent to everyone in Penrose, including apartment dwellers, but the only people who responded lived in single-family homes, so those are the ones that I'm representing. In general, the neighborhood supported the plans, they really did like pretty much everything about it, but there were some things that were, that got called out. One of them was providing passes for teachers and other school employees should not be used as a way for schools to get out of providing adequate parking for their facilities. I was a member of the Career Center Working Group, and I know that Arlington County Schools tries to get out of building garages because of the expense to build them. Penrose has stated clearly the position that this is not appropriate. As you may know, the lack of parking at Fleet School makes it hard to recruit teachers, substitute teachers, and other staff. Schools cannot look at residential streets as their parking resources. Another problem with the plan, and this is the one that's the most troubling, is the paid two-hour parking in the restricted areas with no means of enforcement. Without enforcement, you might as well just open the streets up to everybody. It's unacceptable to the single-family home residents in Penrose who pay, like everybody who lives in Arlington, extremely high property taxes, and they want to be able to park in front of their house, especially after experiencing the problems when the two-apartment buildings were built a few years ago. I suggest, if you want to keep that position in place in these proposals, you need to figure out a way to enforce it and put high fines in place to cover the expenses. You really can't put it into place without a substantial budget to make it successful. If you can't do that, the two-hour paid parking is unacceptable and needs to be removed. Arlington encourages developers to build high-density residential buildings, but then cuts back on the parking spaces allowed. This is typical on Columbia Pike. We'll be facing this with a new residential build that's coming along next year. I know the proponents of the car-free diet will argue that nobody should drive a car anyway because of the effect on the environment. Theoretically, I don't disagree with that, but theoretics won't prevent people from owning cars. It's unacceptable in Penrose for increased density without adequate provision for parking. Right now, with our permit parking, things are manageable. Passes to school staff, unenforced two-hour parking, plus increased density without adequate parking, will seriously affect the quality of our neighborhood. For that reason, we don't recommend the proposal, without the issues I just stated being addressed. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Durgan. It seems like we may have Mr. Polkowski now. Can you hear me? Yes, we can. Go ahead. Can you hear me? Yes, we can hear, we can hear you.
Oh, marvelous. My name is Paul Polkowski with the Barcroft Civic Association, and I just kind of echoing what others have already said. For us, there are three major points why we essentially have a lot of problems with the proposed changes to the RPP program. The first is, we are a residential neighborhood that abuts the Foreign Service Institute and the National Guard headquarters, both on George Mason, plus a lot of business on Columbia Pike. Through experience, we've discovered that without zoning, we become just a big parking lot for the people working at the National Guard or FSI. We don't, we know nearly nineteen, nearly twenty, two-hundreds, two-thousands, we had people waiting at 5:00 in the morning for a space to open up in our neighborhood, so that's how bad it was. People were circling the blocks for hours, you know, starting at about 4:30 in the morning. The second thing is the allocation of passes that we oppose as proposed, and that is because, trying to decide who does or doesn't have a driveway, or sufficient driveway, or do people need to pave driveways now and therefore lose green space in Arlington to make, for more parking? I don't think that is good, nor does, you know, the Barcroft Neighborhood Association believe that this is a good idea. Finally, we have a lot of kids, grown children, really not kids, who are back from college unexpectedly, or work, or wherever they were, because of the COVID crisis. And I, again, associate all my comments with the others that have said, indeed, this has not been well-thought-out, there are unintended consequences, like paving green space for more driveway space, and other aspects of this program that have not been completely thought through. The two-hour parking also just doesn't work for us. Like I said, we'll become an overflow parking lot, as we were in the early 2000s. With that, I thank the leadership for letting me speak, and if you have any other questions for me, please contact me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Polkowski. Glad you were able to get online. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers? Do we have any commissions? Not hearing any. I'll give a quick report on the Transportation Commission. The Transportation Commission met last Thursday evening, on the 4th, and the discussion revolved mostly around the two options for the number of permits per dwelling. I need to say, four for dwelling units without off-street parking, and two for those with. The other option is to allow four permits per dwelling unit, for all dwelling units within the zone. Enforcement was definitely an issue that we discussed, and the concern there that under the ParkMobile app, only the parking enforcement people will be able to know whether a car is properly parked, unlike now where, because of the stickers, everybody can tell whether somebody should be there or not. In general, the Transportation Commission is supportive of the changes to the RPP, and it has general support for the concept of paid parking in these areas, but is more concerned about the details for implementation. The first motion, the two motions were brought. First up was a recommendation to use Option B, and also defer the introduction of paid parking. Option B is the all-dwelling units get four passes per dwelling unit. The vote taken on that was for The vote taken on that was four in favor, four against, and one abstention, which meant it did not pass. After further discussion, a second motion was made to recommend Option A, that's restricting passes to two passes per dwelling unit for places with driveways and four per dwelling unit for units without driveways, and to allow paid parking as recommended, but with the caveat that we would strongly encourage robust enforcement. The vote for that was seven in favor, two opposed, and that is what passed, and that is the recommendation of the Transportation Commission. That said, the item is now, it's time for discussion with the commission. What I would propose tonight, we don't have to report for us other than the staff report, is that we discuss first changes to the existing program, any issues people might have with that, a discussion between Option A and Option B, and then we would have discussion on the implementation or the possibility of having two-hour paid parking, which would include enforcement issues, and any other items. Are there any specific items any other commissioners would like to add to this list? Not, Commissioner Schroll.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Chairman. We had some commentary about the kind of public outreach as part of this process, so would just like to touch on that briefly.
Sure, we can add that. Commissioner Hughes was next.
Thanks, Commissioner Lintelli. I'd like to discuss grandfathering, whether we can wrap that into the changes or not is up at your discretion, but I'd like to understand and discuss publicly the concept of grandfathering.
Sure, sounds good. Commissioner Siegel.
Yeah, good evening, Commissioner Lintelli. I would like to discuss the boundary sharing issue, which I think it was Virginia Square, Boston, Virginia Square, brought up.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Peterson?
I just wanted to hear from staff if they will be taking into consideration the street design to make sure the public comments about yield streets and safety issues will be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Okay, very good. The other comments, Commissioner Hughes, your hand is still up. Is that because you, and Commissioner Siegel, your hand is still up? Is that just inadvertent? Okay, very good. Commissioner Morton? You're recognized.
Yep, thank you. This probably goes under implementation, but I would like a little bit more technical detail about the difference and possibilities for the EZ Park and the app.
Okay, glad that on. That'll be it to our paid parking discussion. Any other items? Very good. Why don't we then move on to those discussions? Yeah, why don't we actually first touch on the public process? Commissioner Schroll, I think we could probably lead that off. Do you have questions for staff on that?
I do, Commissioner Lintelli. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Kram, we did hear some public testimony this evening, you know, on the public process, and maybe before I get started, thank you for your presentation this evening and your work on this over the last few years. Can you remind us of the public process that took place? Kind of when did this public outreach kickoff? My recollection was it was in 2017. Like, what have you done in terms of public outreach? Maybe if you could, it does, you know, you do cover it on the staff report, but I think for those who are with us this evening, if you could maybe provide an overview of the work you've done to date and your colleagues have on public outreach, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Sure, sure. So I'll share this image, which you've seen before. It is basically the road we've taken in public engagement through this process. It did begin back in 2017 when we began some data collection on conditions out in the field. In the summer of 2018, we started with some general pop-up events and an online comment forum just to talk about residential parking in general, and from there, we looked at the various comments that were submitted about RPP, and we used that then to organize a series of community forums in the fall of 2018 where we asked questions around five topics: eligibility, enforcement, community facilities, visitors, and I cannot remember now what the fifth one was, but there was a fifth one. From that, we then developed a household survey that was sent out. Invitations were sent out to 60,000 members of the community, 60,000 households. All households that are in the RPP program received an invitation to take the survey. In total, we got about 4,500 responses out of that. Then in 2019, we submitted a bunch of, basically our thoughts on potential policies to the manager, or to the board, actually, and that was what we were using as the basis when we were planning a series of deliberative dialogues. COVID-19 interrupted those plans, and we decided that it was not going to be possible in the foreseeable future to host deliberative dialogues even online, not because of the technology, though I think the county's experience in recent months trying to have kind of discussion-based engagement, there are problems with that, given that people sometimes don't all have the same technical capabilities at home. But the main reasons were that we were concerned about not being able to get like a diverse group of people present. We were going to rely on community partners for recruitment, like social service agencies or direct service agencies. They, of course, were all focused on responding to the pandemic itself and still are. We felt that the challenge that most of the most vulnerable or like less represented groups in the county were facing because of the pandemic meant that it was difficult to ask them to then be part of a public process on this, and we were, and part of that is because we were hoping to offer things like, you know, meals and onsite childcare and other things to make it really easy and accessible to participate, but of course, we can't really do that if people are all doing it from home. And we do know that people have different levels of internet access as Arlington Public Schools has had to work to rectify. In September, we did publish a project update or recap that went out to all the civic associations and the people on our email list, saying that, you know, we would be releasing a proposed program in October. And then since then, we put up a site with some explanatory videos, a chance to provide comment online. We had an online FAQ session or an online Q&amp;A session, published FAQs, and since then, we've also received comments by phone and email. I've corresponded with civic association presidents asking and residents asking for clarifying questions since that time, and of course, then, you know, these commission meetings since December. I will say that, you know, we have looked at the totality of that engagement in crafting the policy, so we hear loud and clear the letter or the opinions and views shared in letters, but I also want to point out that there are things like when we ask questions in the household survey about what you would like to see in, or what would you prefer about a future program? We also look back at that for some of how we got to these policy answers. So that's like a brief version of our engagement so far, but I'm happy to answer follow-up as well.
That's very helpful, Mr. Kram. I appreciate you going through the totality of the public engagement. And I would say to some of our public speakers this evening, I know that sometimes it can be frustrating, you know, particularly if you might have found out about some of these issues in the last year, year and a half, and some of the public engagement, as Mr. Kram noted, did kind of halt because of COVID and a lot of the planning commission work did, as did other commissions, for a period of months while we figured that out. I will say, though, that this process has had a lot of stakeholder engagement, and I would encourage folks, if they do have critiques, which I know we've heard a number of them this evening, you know, you can have, you know, reasonable people can disagree on whether or not this is a policy that has merit and should go forward, but I would venture that, you know, it shouldn't be on whether or not there was enough robust community engagement, because I certainly think, in my opinion, the years of engagement around this was pretty robust and sought to gather input from thousands of Arlingtonians since 2017. So just wanted to make sure we highlight that for the record. Thank you, Mr. Kram, and I'll yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Schroll. Why don't we now move on to, why don't we just the grandfathering issue? Mr. Hughes, Commissioner Hughes, you have questions on that? Would you like to ask anybody about that?
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Lintelli. I also want to echo Commissioner Schroll to Mr. Graham, your years of work on this are quite envious. I don't think I'd want to do that, and we all think, know that we have to eventually make a decision. Mr. Graham, the grandfathering question, I kind of was curious. So grandfathering is this interesting provision, you know, when someone builds a house, it sets back and infringes upon a new zoning setback. We grandfather in the structure because we don't really want someone to take a bulldozer to their house and redo it. But in this case, we have the power quite easily to change the signs to be in any of those things, and we're also going to preclude any future person from, say, getting the 24-hour permit that Lion Village has. So how should we, as a community, think about that in our equity-based solutions? And how has staff reviewed that sort of grandfathering provision with those sort of statements?
Yeah, that's a good question. I think from our perspective, if we were to look at going back and reviewing all existing restrictions, we would basically be signing up for probably a similar level of effort of review as has been taken here just for general program principles. So I don't think that all of the restrictions that are out there now are ones that I would endorse today, but our focus here has been to look at what, or how the program operates under new restrictions and how things like, you know, types of permits and permit caps work for existing restrictions. We also, of course, face the challenge of having any like kind of factual basis for saying, well, if these restrictions weren't here, what would happen? So I think in general, I am open to a conversation about like individual restrictions or, you know, the restrictions that are there across the county, but I did not, I very purposely did not scope this to be a project where we're looking at both how the program operates and also are all of the existing restrictions ones that we would keep or should they be changed?
So, Mr. Graham, why then make any limits with respect to the county manager's or staff's discretion as to how to implement a new area? So for example, should a neighborhood seek to and be able to validate that a 24-hour restriction is a necessary component to preserve their purpose as you state in your intent? Why would that be something we preclude automatically within the ordinance and require an ordinance change?
The hours of restriction are in the administrative guidelines. They're not in the ordinance itself, but our-
Well, I read the staff report, and it was quite clear that they have to be within one of four separate guidelines, no earlier than 8:00 a.m. and no later than 1:00 a.m. Is that correct?
I don't believe that's in the ordinance.
So the administrative guidelines that supplement it, that are supplemented, why go in there, then?
Because to a certain extent, the question is, you know, should we be restricting parking at all times when it is a public space, when it is, you know, a public asset?
But, Mr. Graham, we are. So I'll, my point to my fellow commissioners is I plan to make a motion to establish county manager's discretion and strike the administrative guidelines for the four set hours. The primary reason, Mr. Graham, is you're saying that we shouldn't be having restrictions there, but the problem is that some of my neighbors will once we adopt this ordinance. And when we think about equity-based solutions, we really do have to ask ourselves, is it fair for the goose and fair for the gander? That means we can't carve out little special instances. So do I think 24 hours is necessary in some parts? Maybe. Am I willing to live with it in Lion Village? Yes. And then do I think that others have the right to have the county board or have the county staff consider it? Yes, I do, Mr. Graham. So, Mr. Graham, I appreciate it, but you keep on going back to the same point, which is I agree with you. It may not be a rational thing going forward, but if that's our case, then we should take it away from those who have it now if we want to be fair across the board. Commissioner Lintelli, I'll yield back my time. Thank you, Mr. Graham, though you have done a great deal of effort on this work.
I thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Next topic, the boundary issue. I think that's Commissioner Siegel.
Yes. So first, I guess I would just ask Mr. Graham to, so that we're all on the same page as to what this issue is. That is, what I was thinking about was allowing a budding, and tell me if this is correct, because this is how I think about it, allowing a budding RPP zones to park in each other's zone. Now, is that incorrect? If that's, if there's, if I've missed something about that, could you just lay it out for us? That's first, and then I'll make my point.
Sure. So you are correct, but there are limits to it. So the idea is that there would be the ability to park, people from two different zones would be able to park in each other's zones, but for only a block in each direction where they meet. The idea is that, you know, say I live at the edge of a zone, that means, you know, if you're, if something were perfectly circular, like say I live, like, right here, under current conditions, that means, you know, I can basically go south to find a place to park if I can't park right on my street. Someone down here in, like, you know, closer towards the center of the zone or maybe at the other end, they can go in four different directions. So the idea is just to make it such that, you know, if you have, if you live, say, at the edge of a zone, you still have approximately the same area in which to find parking as your neighbors, like, say, deeper in the zone. Currently, the program handles edge conditions like this in a few different ways, and so the idea is just to make this the way that we deal that, deal with that when all zones meet.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. Let me just have a quick follow-up on that. Street grids are not identical, as you, as we just saw. Some edge conditions will have long roads or streets going east to west, and on the other side, they may be shorter. So I keep thinking, I keep going back to the enforcement issues, not only with the two-hour paid parking to take some burden, to support retail, which I think is a good argument for that, although I have a lot of misgivings about it, as been, has been expressed by members of our community. How, is there, do you foresee an enforcement issue on that score?
So we checked with police on this, and their answer was no. As long as the sign marks which stickers are valid, we will, our staff will be able to say, okay, yep, that's valid here.
Okay, so that each, so when the signs go up indicating which sticker you must have for, is there a sign on, I know there are a number of signs in a zone, but, so you would strategically place the sign so people, people would know what blocks they can park on?
Correct.
Effectively, that's, that's what you're saying? Okay.
Correct. So, I mean, you know, for example, it would be like- So, I mean, you know, for example, it would be like, resident permit parking zone 1/2, so that you know that, like, oh, I have a zone 2 sticker, or I have a zone 1 sticker, and both of us know we could park on that street.
Who, who would, who would be designing this? I mean, it's not immediately intuitive, because we don't have a perfect, you know, 250-foot square urban ideal urban block. So somebody from the county, either from your office or from the police, I don't know who would be doing this, perhaps your office, would say, would have to say, okay, for this zone, how, the reason I'm asking this, this question is that I, I do, I share the generalized concern, which I think really has to be boiled down to specifics, about this sort of one-size-fits-all. I'm persuaded that we can't have, I don't know how many zones there are, 15 zones or 20 zones, we can't have a different system for 20 zones, or however many zones there are. And there has to be some consistency in the county, also so people understand what the RPP does and is. But there, there is, it shades into my concern about there are some specific, and sometimes egregious cases, where the, the design breaks down and people have problems, some of which we've heard tonight. So on this particular issue of sharing, who designs that? Who would go around between the zones, plant this sign here, plant that sign there?
Sure. So, yeah, no, we have included that in the administrative policies and procedures, because it was, it would be something that would be done as, as like a staff process to designate where those, like, quote, "boundary streets" start and stop.
So that would be, that would, that, that is a burden on staff, which you can accomplish and need to accomplish in order for this to work smoothly.
Yes. And, you know, to be honest, I will say, though, you know, I, I actually, going into this process, thought that this would be something that would have more support, because there are people, you know, who live at the edges of these zones. And I guess I just sort of thought naively, it's like, oh, well, you know, you're now going to be able to go, like, that other direction, that, you know, your neighbors over there will also be able to go to. So, I mean, as I hear now, more opposition to this, it very well could become a very difficult and complicated process. And I'm, you know, we'll see what we're able to come up with. But yes, we have left this, in this case, we've left this as something to be worked out as we, as we go.
This is, thank you very much for that exchange. I hope that was enlightening for my fellow commissioners. It, it's one example of the sort of issue of one-size-fits-all. How do we, how do we isolate those potential problems that, that can flare up? But, but I'll come back to that later in other comments. So thank you, Commissioner Lentini. I'll, I'll yield the floor.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Siegel. Mr. Krim, that was very enlightening. I'm wondering whether, when that is being said, that new boundary policy, would you, or whoever does that, consult with the two civic associations? Or the civic association that would be affected by that border issue? Or how far in, or what blocks would then be covered?
I know that we will have, I mean, in my mind, and I think in our team's mind, we've always understood that there would be some amount of engagement that would need to be done around this, just because it is something that people care about, though the specifics of to whom we would be going is not something we had fully worked out. So, yeah, perhaps the civic association would be a good venue for that. I'll just admit that I had not gotten that far in my thinking as to whom exactly we would be approaching.
And would it be possible that some, some places leaving it as is would work? That you wouldn't have, wouldn't extend or would expend very little into the two different neighborhoods to have the overlapping, have the overlap? Is it required now? Would it be required going forward to have this overlap, rather than a clean boundary?
Well, it's certainly not required. We do want to have consistency, but we have left it in the realm of the, we've left the realm of uncertainty about how it would be implemented. So, I mean, yes, that leaves it that it may not happen in some places, but our goal would be to have, you know, a block at the edges be open to the people from the two zones.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Steinberger, you have your hand up?
Yes, can you hear me and see me? Sorry, technical difficulties are forcing me to work from my iPad, so.
I can hear you. I can hear you and see you.
Apologies. Um, so I know that I've, when we've heard some, the RPP changes come to the commission before, I know I've expressed some concerns with the one-sizedness of some of the aspects to the changes. Candidly, the border areas are not one where I have any concerns, really, with the one-size-fits-ness of the plan. To me, it makes total sense that if you have two zones, they have a border, that you would have, share a block or so of, between the two zones. That seems like a very kind of reasonable approach to zones. I mean, the zones, as I can understand, some of them are sort of arbitrary in terms of how large some of them are versus others. And so you're, you're going to sort of have the borders be what they are, and it makes sense that if you have two zones next to each other, that rather than what I guess had been the prior approach of giving residents passes to two zones, which I think just causes, is, is, I think, very unwieldy and probably contributes much, to a much greater extent to parking problems in two, two locations. Simply having a block or so of sort of that boundary being available to both zones seems very workable to me and not something that would really cause concern. I, I guess, I'm sure you know, many people feel differently on this, but I, I really don't see that as being something where I think there's an equity issue at play there, if you more or less have said it, so that it's really that bordering block that has it, and you're not sort of doing an analysis each time for how many blocks between the different zones you're going into. So I, I just wanted to speak up on, on that account, because I, I know that I've had questions about the applicability and the one-size-fits-all approach to some of the, some of what's proposed. I, I do not have that with regards to the border parking. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Steinberger. Commissioner Peterson, you wanted to raise questions about street design and yield streets?
Yes, thank you very much. I just wanted to ask Mr. Krim how the county may be assessing the suitability of looking at increasing possible parking on streets. One of our public speakers mentioned yield streets. I'm not sure if that's an official term, but I do know, when I have been taking my daughter to her tennis lessons before the pandemic started over at Lion Village Park, there were definitely streets along the way that you did need to, you know, like, pull over a little bit to let somebody else coming in the opposite direction. And so I just want to make sure that's going to be addressed, if we may be looking at increasing parking in some neighborhood streets. Thank you very much.
So, you know, I'll state that safety and so on is always usually the thing that comes first. And so one of the things that, you know, frequently we run into is an issue when we talk to residents, is that we really have a mandate to make sure the streets are safe, and sometimes that means taking away parking. I think, you know, we, if we were to reach a situation where it seemed that one of the problems on, or that a street was now too narrow, there are ways to create area, like, small areas of no parking, so that somebody can pull over, so it's not just reliant on, it, it doesn't have to rely on, oh, well, there, there isn't utilization, so there's space. It's like, there's a way to create space where it's just, like, no parking for a car length or two, so that somebody can park, should occupancy become an issue. I'm going to stop there, because I'm actually not the person that is most qualified in the county to talk about, like, engineering and design of that. But I would say that if occupancy were to become an issue, there are other tools available to help continue to maintain safety on narrower streets.
Okay, so the process would be to let the street go into this new parking model, and if there were enough complaints about safety on a very narrow street where there wasn't sufficient places to pull over, then in response to that, you would consider kind of having some pullout areas, rather than kind of proact, or in advance, introducing those pullout areas, kind of knowing what the traffic patterns look like, or knowing how wide the street is and how much space there would be if there was full parking on both sides.
Yeah, we would not start with, I, I don't think we would start by saying, like, okay, we're going to now, in advance, remove the parking, or remove any parking to create pullout areas. We would instead be looking at it to see if occupancy, in fact, did reach a point where that was an issue. Though I will say, if there's anybody else on this call who might be a little more familiar with this, who wants to speak and tell me that I did not speak in turn as a non-traffic engineer, please feel free to do so. But I think that is at least a, hopefully, a helpful starter on what the county's options would be.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. It strikes, and I'll just jump in here a little bit. I, I'm familiar with yield streets. There's a number of them in Lion Village. I think there are also down at Lion Park. A number of, certainly, I think Aurora Highlands has them, too. The older neighborhoods tend to have the narrower streets and are yield streets, which actually work wonderfully as the natural traffic calming. You can't go fast in them, simply because if you have any car coming the other direction, you have to be slow. So they work really, really well as a traffic calming. It would strike me that where it works fine that way, that is like, one of the prime reasons not to have paid parking in those areas, because they have a natural occupancy that works to accommodate the existing parking needs and, at the same time, slow down traffic and, beyond that, allow emergency vehicles to make it through completely, you know, properly and with, with ease. So that's why I've always been advocating for a block-by-block review of whether to have paid parking or not, rather than having a one-size-fits-all. Anyway, I'll get off the high horse on there. We have other, Commissioner Hughes, you were first, and then Commissioner Siegel, and then back to Commissioner Steinberger.
Thanks, Commissioners. I'll be brief, because it's sort of a follow-up to your comments. And I was going to point out to my fellow commissioner that, in this case, I think it's important to understand, you know, one of the aspects that the community's talking about here is, these yield streets have reached a natural equilibrium, and a fear that the equilibrium will be breached and increased, such that we become more like some parts of DC, you know, when you go down the 8th Street, DC, in, in the middle of the night, it's, it's impossible, and you're always fighting to try to find that next spot. And because everybody's doing the same thing, we all fight for the same spots, and it creates this natural worst-case scenario. And I think that's what we're hearing from the community in this case. So for my commissioners thinking on this one, do understand what would happen, then, Commissioner Peterson, would be, I know Ms. Harrison's online. The, the reality of it is, is that if you wanted to keep it moving, and it became a one-way street, at that point, you'd have options like one-way street, you'd have the options to keep the two-way traffic and remove one aisle of parking. We go through this every once in a while, when we do these narrow streets in the other neighborhoods. Commissioner Lentini, I have one as well. And it's, it's not a pretty sight, and it's not interesting. So I think it's, it's a little bit here about how much we want to push that natural balance that has occurred here. And Commissioner Lentini, I'll let Commissioner Siegel and Commissioner Stein.
Yes, Commissioner Siegel, you're next.
This is a, this is a great conversation, and I think it, it may, we may be putting Mr. Krim on the, on the spot here, because he's not a traffic engineer, and we don't have, or, or maybe we do, I don't know who's online, a DES person. I know, for example, that, and this is not to do with yield streets, but it's to do with four-way stops, that you need, there are, I think they're called warrants. Someone else may know more about this than me, but there, there are criteria in place for when certain techniques can be used to manage the traffic flow. Four-way streets is one. Four-way stop is what I'm talking about. And there, in, in that sort of bucket of tools, I think some, if we knew, if we had a, a little bit of a better overview of what those tools were, then we might feel greater ease about some of these issues like the, like the yield streets. I just wanted, I just wanted to put that out there. I guess nobody has jumped in to inform the conversation better than I have just done. But there, there are, I, I can report that in Aurora Highlands, I know that the community wanted to have a no-left-turn sign between the hours of X and Y. And DES informed the civic association that that had been an old technique that's no longer used, and, and gave a further explanation as to how DES looks at street design. I'm not quite sure where I'm going with this, but I, I am concerned that to put a policy in place on a one-size-fits-all does, could cover a number of issues that, that could emerge. And I, I keep thinking about, where, where would some of these issues that really cause problems, and everybody recognizes they cause problems, how would they be resolved? So that was by way, if you'll indulge me, of sort of thinking out loud about this.
Thank you, Commissioner Siegel. Commissioner Steinberger, you're next.
Hi. So I guess I actually had a question, and it relates back to the conversation we had on grandfathering. If we were to remove all of the previously grandfathered and limits on, in the different RPP zones, would that also do away with any previously improved yield spaces? Or I'm forgetting the exact term that was used for those kind of pullouts on, on those streets that are kind of narrow, where you do need to sort of yield to your neighbor, in effect?
No, no, none of the changes to the RPP program would automatically change something like that.
Okay, those, the changes that would be grandfathered are more like, hours of day you can park only?
Correct. What we're talking about is simply the permit restrictions.
Okay. Thank you very much. That was my question.
Thank you, Commissioner Steinberger. Other changes to the existing program I'll touch base on, if anybody has comments, certainly raise your hand on it, otherwise we'll move ahead on them. One is the change to the fees to make the program be self-supporting. Does anybody have comments on that? Yes, Commissioner Steinberger.
Me again. I've been a proponent of this from the beginning, that if the program is not paying for itself at this point, and it is a benefit to residents, and we've certainly heard from many residents in the community, that there is a great benefit from the RPP program, the program needs to be able to pay for itself. I certainly think that we need to look at raising the price so that it, of the permit, so that it can do that. I am in favor of sort of escalating costs for permits, you know, as you go 1, 2, 3, to 4, if that's something that, you know, we approve as a commission. I, I do think that having those scaling costs makes sense. And I, I think that it's, you know, with the understanding that we do need to, you know, with, with prices going up, we need to be looking out from an equity perspective on making sure that lower-income individuals can still access the program, and that we do take that into account and provide discounts, you know, as appropriate there. So I'm, I'm entirely in favor of the plan with regards to the fees.
Thank you. Commissioner Morton, you're next.
I will just strongly associate myself with the comments of Commissioner Steinberger. And, and again, appreciative of the fact that you are proposing a 50% discount for lower income, but I, I don't see any reason why it shouldn't support itself, and I'm also in favor of the, the fees to make sure that that happens.
Thank you, Commissioner Morton, and I'll go on record, also associating myself with those comments. Commissioner Sarley.
At the risk of sounding a little repetitive, I, too, want to strongly support Commissioner Steinberger's approach. Steinberger's approach.
Thank you, thank you. Let's move on to another change to the program, which is opening it up to other by right dwelling units within the zones. That means going beyond the single-family houses and moving on to allow townhouses and multifamilies that have, that were built by right. That means they're not under a site plan, they're not under a URD. Anyway, comments on that. Commissioner Hughes, your hand is up.
Thank you, Commissioner Lantome. Not to pile on, but that's the wonderful thing is that, you know, sometimes we all know that our silence is normally the support we have for our fellow commissioners because we're always willing to speak up and say when we disagree with each other because we like each other so much. I do want to say this is such a key and wonderful thing, Mr. Graham and staff. I cannot say enough how much of an impact this is going to have on our community. I think it's a wonderful thing. I think that this is honestly, whether staff wants to admit it or not, the root cause of why we are reviewing this entire process. And it does come from the Columbia, the Civic Association of Arlington Mill. So it is incredibly wonderful that staff has moved this forward. I think it does a great deal of moving. And I think for the community at large to hear clearly, this does not mean that the apartment buildings that are built within our current planning get a pass. They do not get one. That is very clear. This is about our legacy apartments, the ones that were built by right. That means that like my house, they are required to have a parking allotment by the zoning ordinance, and I'm required to have one. So I do think it's a great point. And I just want to make sure that that's known. And my, my fellow commissioners need not jump on and pile on if you agree, because I'm sure we all do. And if you disagree, I look forward to hearing the point. Commissioner Lantome, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. And I'll jump in here too. I actually walked around my neighborhood to look at some of the multifamilies that we have existing in our neighborhood that were built by right. And virtually all of them, all of them have at least some parking and some of them have enough parking beyond, beyond more than one space per unit. So as a practical matter, for many of these added on, buildings that will be added into the program, it will not necessarily result in additional cars on the street. It will in some cases, absolutely, but many of them do already come with parking already. Commissioner Steinberger.
Thank you. I do want to strongly associate myself with Commissioner Hughes' comments. It comes down to fairness again. We have residents in our communities who live in these by right multi-unit buildings. You know, oftentimes they're apartment buildings or condos, but sometimes they might be a duplex. And they've essentially been excluded from a benefit that other members in our, of our community in the single-family homes have access to. And that's not fair. You know, they should be able to have the same act, they've been buildings built by right. And we're not talking about buildings built subject to the site plan procedures, which, you know, go through a parking review process. We've heard, you know, a lot about that. And I think that when you, you know, have a site plan project that goes through a parking review as part of that process, that is under, that is appropriately so treated differently and should be subject to different rules and have to live by the parking that is approved on those projects, 100%. But that's not what we're talking about here. And to have members of our community excluded from being able to provide street parking for their guests, for themselves sometimes, in these by right developments, it's simply unfair and it's creating a second class of citizen in our communities that I think we are cognizant of and need to address now. And this is the appropriate time to take that action. So I'm very supportive of that change. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Steinberger. Commissioner Sarley.
I'm gonna take Commissioner Hughes's comment and pile on, I think was the term he used. I agree also with this statement very strongly, and I would like to just voice that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sarley. Let's now move on to the question of whether, of moving up to 80% of a block has to want to have the RPP put in, increasing from what it used to be, and then having, the street has to have 85% occupancy in order to then qualify for the, for the RPP program. Do we have any discussion on that? Okay, if not, we will then move on. I think it's now time for us to move on to the evaluation between option A and option B. That is the issue of how many permits per dwelling unit will we be authori, recommending. Again, so that we'll remember, for properties that have a driveway, have off-street parking, they will get two. That means either two stickers or a placard and a sticker. Option, and then those buildings, lots that do not have any off-street parking, they will have up to four. That means combination of, you know, of one placard and three stickers. Option B is that every dwelling unit within that zone, within that block would get four permits. Discussion. Throw it out to the floor. Commissioner Siegel, you got your hand up?
Yes, Commissioner Lantome, could you repeat, I'm sorry, but could you repeat what you stated very clearly, but I'd like to hear it again. What the discussion was on this at the Transportation Commission?
Right. At first, the Transportation Commission made a motion to accept option B. That was the one where every dwelling unit within the zone gets four permits. That was, was not passed, which the Commission then moved on to option A, and that was supported seven to two. Option A is the, where if you have a driveway, you get two permits maximum. If you do not have a, have off-street parking, then you can get up to four permits.
Okay.
Commissioner, Mr. Krim, definitely jump in if I misstate any of these things, please.
Nope, you under, I, you know, I have to, I'm going to rely on you for characterization of the discussion, but you described the two options quite right.
Thank you.
So I've been sort of going back and forth in my mind on this. And I was really, I'm really interested in hearing what my folk commissioners, an initial reaction that I have that I could easily be convinced out of. It just seems to me that this is a residential parking permit program. And therefore, I would opt for, for permits per household, no matter whether there's a driveway, not a driveway, because A, generally, that's what, that's what this is. And B, we did hear a lot, and maybe just from Aurora Highlands, but maybe there are other zones that have the issue, which is there are, you have, in, in some cases, two unrelated people living in, in a house, there are accessory dwellings, things like that. So that way, you, you don't, you don't limit what I think Commissioner Lantome has rightly called sort of affordable housing, unofficial, maybe illegal in some cases, or not consistent with regulation, affordable, the ability to live affordably in Arlington. So I would go for just the, the higher number. I throw that out as a, as a sort of straw man to hopefully goad my fellow commissioners into arguing with it or supporting it.
Thank you, Commissioner Siegel. Mr. Krim, actually, that raises a question. How are we treating legal accessory units on a lot that has a single-family detached house?
And you read my mind as to, you read my mind as to why I had my hand up. Under the proposed program, residents of accessory dwelling units approved by the county would be eligible to receive the full complement of permits. So if you have an ADU, that is a separate allotment from the main or the primary dwelling.
Thank you. That, that's, that's, that's helpful. Commissioner Steinberger, I think you were next. Then Commissioner Weir, and then Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you. So candidly, I found myself in a very similar sort of mental space to Commissioner Siegel as of this morning. When I was preparing for this meeting, I found myself leaning one way, and I have over the course of this meeting, find myself leaning a different way. I feel that it would be certainly more manageable in terms of enforcement to take the approach of four permits available for each household. I think that avoids having to get into a consideration of what is sufficient off-street parking, how much off-street parking one house, one household might have sufficient off-street parking for maybe one very small car and what would, versus a house that might have, you know, sufficient space and a garage and such for three or more cars. And I think that we're getting into again, an equity issue there. And I, I don't really know how staff would manage, and I'd be curiousness, what, what would staff's approach be to figuring out what, whether something has sufficient off-site parking so as to really be considered off-street parking and thereby only get the two permits versus the four? I also will say, and I do want to answer that question, but let me just give my second point, which is, I think by having the increasing, the elevating cost, you know, from one to four permits, and having that fourth permit be, I believe we said it was going to be the $150 mark, that you will be, by virtue of that, encouraging people to use their off-street parking if they have it. So I think we'll still get the benefits simply by having that increasing cost that allowing the market to kind of regulate and encouraging people by virtue of that to use their off-street parking and not necessarily purchase all four, four permits, even though every household would be, would be entitled to that. And I would like staff to weigh in on how the determination of what qualifies as sufficient off-street parking would even be made.
Sure. Oh, sorry, Mr. Chair, would you like me to answer now?
Yes, please do.
Okay. So, yeah, I think the key point there is that we are not, we are not proposing to make a judgment about sufficiency. We are simply, would be looking at whether there is any off-street parking, which is why we have that there. It is not based on quantity. We are in the process of building a database. In, you know, whether the board decides to accept this proposal or not, we know that we need to be working ahead of that. So we're building a database of whether or not residences in the county have off-street parking based on a combination of real estate assessment data and imagery, aerial imagery of properties around the county and some work that's been done by our GIS department to define and delineate driveways.
Okay, I appreciate that answer. I mean, I think that's really the only way you could go about making that determination. And I think that is useful and important data for us to have, whether it's something that is used now or if that might be at some point in five years or whenever it would be to consider the program again. I still think that the easier to enforce and the more equitable distribution at this point in time is to allow every household to have the four permits with the sliding scale from lower cost to higher cost. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Steinberger. Commissioner Weir, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question and then a couple of comments. Mr. Krim, am I correct in remembering that you have told us that very few, if any, of the zones are presently allowing, are presently taking advantage of the fourth permit? Am I correct in remembering that?
Yes, there, there are no zones that have opted for four vehicle-specific permits, which is technically on the books but doesn't exist anywhere. Just to be clear, though, what we're talking about here are numbers that include the flex pass. So if you were to think of it, like the, the fourth permit, the fourth vehicle-specific permit that is not present anywhere, that would be for a total of five annual permits.
Got it, got it. Okay, thank you. I, that, that, that helps me dial back what I was tempted to say, but a little bit. The, about one-fifth, we'll say. So I, to me, the obvious choice, if we're going to recommend one, is option A. And that's because the question that motivates this is, is how much of the public right-of-way are we going to effectively privatize for the private benefit of people living within about a block of, of that spot of the private right-of-way? And it seems to me like the answer to that is that less is more. Where we are talking about properties that already have off-street parking, the present program permits and encourages people to, to burden the public for the parking of their cars. I, I think that, you know, Commissioner Hughes and others have pointed out that, and we've received public comment to this effect, that, that the risk here is that people will build additional off-street parking. You know, people probably are going to build additional off-street parking, but I don't think it's correct to say that they'll be doing that because of any changes to the residential permit parking program. I suspect that anyone who is going to be moved to spend thousands of dollars to tear up a significant portion of their lawn so that they can park additional cars on their property is not someone who's on the margin of doing that as between needing to be able to park four cars for their single-family house and five cars or six cars, right? I strongly suspect that the homeowner that's going to be spending those thousands of dollars to tear up their property to put more parking, that they're going to do it under the current regime anyway. And it's not these changes that will be doing it. So I really think that we have to be stewards of the public right-of-way. And I think that, that option A better positions ourselves to steward the public right-of-way. And thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Weir. Commissioner Hughes, you're next. And then Commissioner Schwal after that.
Thanks, Commissioner Lantome. I'm actually, I have almost changed my perception on this since we began this meeting through my fellow commissioners' dialogues. I do want to thank all of you. I'm actually in favor of point A. The reason being is that two cars or two additional cars beyond the one car is sufficient for most of the needs of our community. And as I pointed out earlier, it also means that condos and, and new apartments also have that same right to those two flex passes and the one fixed pass. We do, I think, and I know I'm in a disagreement with Commissioner Weir on this one, I do believe that the area within the neighborhood should be of primary benefit to the neighbors. And that means all neighbors everywhere. And if I go to visit Commissioner Lantome, I hope he'd give me one of those flex passes so I could stop and park and go, you know, chat with him. And that's fine, just like I would give him one if I had it. So my, my point is to all of us, I do think that two is sufficient. I do think four is stretching it. And as we think about other future planning processes coming down the line that might be by right in the future, as I thought some things have coming out of the, maybe the missing middle study, this could have impacts in those areas. So I do think it's important to remember that yes, we have a resource. Yes, it does need to be allocated, but it also needs to be allocated to the benefits of all of our policies. So I'm actually inclined to support the two over the four. Thank you, Commissioner Lantome.
I think Commissioner Hughes, Commissioner Schwal, and then Commissioner Sarley after that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A question for Mr. Krim before I make a comment. Please help me understand here the decision on the, on the fees for option B. I think what I heard you say during your presentation was that anticipated inc- I think what I heard you say during your presentation was that anticipated increase in the number of permits that would be purchased would sort of offset the lower fees here. Is that, did I hear that right?
That's correct. Since we are, you know, generally speaking, trying to not make more than our expenses, if the expenses aren't going up, but we're selling more permits, then the fees need to be lower. Now, you know, say this were to be introduced, say that you were to recommend, and the board were to adopt something where all four permits are allowed, and, you know, we're not actually pulling in enough revenue still, then that's where we would potentially adjust up. But yes, if we have a larger market and more permits are sold, then the prices will be lower if we are still seeking the same revenue target roughly.
Right. And so staff didn't entertain their using price to disincentivize the additional permits under option B. Since the prices are lower, they're designed to just cover expenses, but they're lower than option A. And so, and they're very similar to what they are currently, right? And so, at least for the first two.
Well, so I mean, you know, the Flex Pass would no longer be free. So that's one thing. So everybody would be paying something for their passes. But yes, they are closer to current prices than the prices under option A. Again, and again, you know, the modeling that we've done, we may see that reality is different, but increasing the prices greatly on the second and third permit will probably generate more revenue than it would dissuade people from purchasing them. So we end up with excess revenue when we're trying to just meet cost.
Gotcha. That's helpful, Mr. Krim. I appreciate that. I would just associate myself with some of my fellow commissioners' comments on option A. I think it strikes the right balance. We had heard from several folks this evening about wanting to have some nuance in the policy, and I think option A does allow us the opportunity to strike the right balance in terms of using our public right-of-way in a better fashion for more of Arlington, while also allowing those who don't have off-street parking, you know, the ability to have a greater utility of that space. So I think that strikes the right balance, and if we get to motions, I think that will certainly be what I will support. Thank you.
Well, I think Commissioner Schroll, and let me just jump in here. I want to emphasize something and make sure we're crystal clear, is that this is not being done to raise revenue. The monies that are going to be raised, the fees that are being charged, are simply to cover the cost of this existing program. That data correct? You're on mute.
I'm sorry. I actually lost your audio for a second. So could you perhaps repeat yourself?
Sure. Yeah, I wanted to emphasize that what I believe I've been reading correctly, and you've been saying, is that revenues on this are simply to cover the cost of the program. They are not being done to raise revenue for the county.
Correct.
Thank you. Commissioner Sarley, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to address this issue of the impervious surface. Arlington County has a very strict formula about sort of what is allowed by way of impermeable surfaces on one's lot, and that has real impacts on like what you're able to build and not build. As usual, the enforcement of this is, you know, you can do whatever you want, really. But as far as permitting goes, it does add to your calculation and would preclude you from doing other projects in the future and so on and so forth. So I feel like that's an area that we probably shouldn't be too worried about relative to parking. I think it's something that's being used or misused a little bit on this conversation.
Thank you, Commissioner Sarley. That's good information. Commissioner Morton?
Thank you. Following up on the point about this isn't being done to raise revenue, and it kind of bleeds into my point about the two-hour parking, which we'll get into, is, I definitely understand that you don't want to be raising revenue, but if the constraint on enforcing the two-hour is revenue, I mean, is there a way of making that connection? Are there just two entirely different issues that you don't want to?
Yeah, I think, yeah, Commissioner Morton, jumping in, we could wait for the paid parking discussion for this.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Because I was referring simply to the monies raised by the permitting, nothing else.
Sure. But it is the same program, right? We can talk about it next.
Right, right. Commissioner Hughes, your hand is up still, or is it?
Yeah, no, I did want to speak. Thank you, Commissioner Lantome, to address Commissioner Sarley on his point. So, and I was really clear in my comments last week to everyone, so that everyone is on the same page about how this works and how it can go. Yes, there are very strict requirements. We in zoning create them for lot coverage. And lot coverage has lots of things that go into it, driveway spaces are counted, area that's not driveway and all that. And Commissioner Sarley deals with this on a daily basis, so he's well aware of all of it. But my point for my fellow commissioners is that should you max out, like most of our new development does, your entire developable area, there is no permit that gets pulled for any more patio you add on to the backyard. There's no permit anywhere for a ground disturbance or anything for putting in a brick patio around your back. And so that can be parked on and other things. So Mr. Krim seems to have a comment on that respect?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, please do.
Yeah, so we have dug into this in depth to make sure we understand what our actual policies are at this point. And Mr. Hughes is more or less correct. We, when a project is first being proposed, there is a lot of scrutiny, and there is this consideration. If somebody wants to widen their driveway at the apron, like along the street, that also will, I mean, somebody can try to not tell us, but there is a permit around that as well, because, you know, you're basically crossing the sidewalk and changing the pedestrian realm. However, at this time, there is no permit required to pave more of your private property if you keep the apron the same width and just make it longer, or it fans out a bit onto your property. That is correct. We do not have a permit that requires you to come back in to have that reviewed. Now, environmental services and zoning are working on such a permit, but at this point, it does not exist.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Krim. And that's why I just wanted to make sure it was clear to all of my fellow commissioners. I live in South Arlington, where we're very lax on our zoning restrictions and neighbors who call us in for zoning violations, and I don't, believe it or not. So, but they are profuse, so it makes me know all of these things quite clearly. So one thing that I think is clear for my commissioners to realize is, so that we all are understanding, because we've had several public comments over the time say so, there is nothing that does preclude someone from making those changes should the public right-of-way near them become so intolerable that they feel their only choice, as Commissioner Weir points out, is to spend thousands of dollars. It is only about four grand, because I live on 100% block. I am kind of aware of this, although I have plenty of lot coverage left on my lot, because it's from 1937. Thank you, Commissioner Lantome.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Commissioner Steinberger? Oh, wait, Mr. Krim, your hand is up. Do you need to comment on this? Okay, Commissioner Steinberger.
Yeah, I had a question, and I don't remember what it was anymore, so apologies on that one. I reserve the right to ask it if I think of it. I'm so sorry, it just went away.
That sounds good. Not a problem. We're both in there. Commissioner Siegel, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I do. I want to rejoin the conversation, having heard it, and I think it's a rich and valuable Just a few points, comments, and then I'll make a proposal or a question. Or maybe they're all comments. I appreciate the elegance of Commissioner Weir's language and his framing of the issue that this is a public right-of-way, and how much are we willing to privatize it? To me, there's a sort of a practical issue and a question that arises. What are the opportunity costs? What other uses might be accommodated under the more restrictive permitting system? I think what, that's my question, and I don't see it. As I say, I like the framing, but I don't see the practical implication. What I think limits people's car ownership is the expense. I mean, it's phenomenally expensive to own cars, and I think that is really the limiting factor. So that's one comment. I'm seeing, I think I'm seeing, I guess there are many more of us, and maybe I'm misreading the commission as a whole, and we'll see when we come to motions. But I'm, if we went with the option A, I think Commissioner Steinberger's issue about, well, you know, and Mr. Krim's response, we're not judging whether the off-street parking can accommodate one little car or two gigantic cars. So it would be a kind of a broad brush that would indicate whether you could get four permits or two. I mean, maybe you back into that by saying, well, if there's no off-street parking, then you get four, no questions asked. If, in order to support A, I would have to, and maybe Mr. Krim can respond to this, could there, there would certainly, in my view, be cases where a, someone with a sort of a small driveway or a small off-street parking capability might really need three or even four permits. Could there be a set of exceptions, let's say, for the cases that were raised, for example, by the Aurora Highlands people? That's a question for Mr. Krim.
Yes. So we do not support the idea of having an exception process for this, given that then we start to get into questions of sufficiency, as your fellow commissioner pointed out. And that becomes a much more complicated process that then also gets into questions of fairness between neighbors, saying like, well, they were able to make this case for allowing more, then why can't I make a similar case? We think that it is more appropriate to simply have like a number that is applied consistently and that there is like some fairness in that, that we think we would be, you know, not, it would not be seen as fair if there were exceptions being granted here and there. And I mean, I think this is where, we're also looking at this from the perspective of the fact that, you know, the zoning ordinance treats all properties as saying, you know, if you have, you know, you're supposed to be providing the off-street parking that's sufficient for your property. Now, we know that's not always the case, but we think it is important to provide some sort of relationship between off-street parking and the number of permits you can get. I would say this, I would much rather deal with a program where the caps are higher than one where we're giving out exceptions all the time. And we're not proposing a program with exceptions, but I'll just state that as, you know, how I feel about some sort of exception process for the permit caps.
Thank you. That helps.
I think Commissioner Siegel. Before I get to Commissioner Weir, I just want to note that we do have a little bit of, looking at the MTP and the parking component of it, we do actually have a policy that, let me read it, says encourages the voluntary removal of off-street surface parking in excess of zoning requirements in residential areas where the on-street parking is utilized at 60% or less. So we actually have wanted to shift, our policy is to shift parking off of the single-family lot onto the street where people are willing to do it. So, you know, I do note that. We do have things maybe operating a little bit at odds here. We, in this neighborhood, we do have some new houses that have one spot in front of them, one off-street spot only. And, you know, that does sort of fall between the cracks of the program A or option A. Commissioner Weir?
Thank you. Commissioner Siegel, just in practical response to your question, which is an extremely valid one and a good one. These changes contemplate and attempt to add a whole lot more categories of people to the categories of people who are able to park on the street in these areas, home service providers, people who live in townhomes or apartments that aren't site-planned, landlords, some more kinds of guests. You know, there's a significant expansion in this, in these recommendations of the pool of people who are eligible to get some kind of pass in order to, some kind of option to park in these RPP zones. And the only real way to accommodate that is to, especially, you know, where there's constant demand, as we've heard in a lot of these neighborhoods, is to make room for them. And so, you know, in practical application, these recommended changes already itemize for us the people that we want to be making that room for. I hope that that's helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner Weir. Commissioner Steinberger, you're next.
I remembered my question. Do we have to make a recommendation between A or B at this juncture? Or can this go to the county board with both options?
Okay, yes, it could. If we so voted, we could send both of them forward. And of course, regardless of our recommendation, they can decide to take it or not. I think that it is probably better for us to make a recommendation, that we prefer one over the other, just to give some guidance to them. I think that's part of what our job is. But yes, if we feel that we simply can't decide, or we think both have enough validity that both going forward, that is an option, if someone's willing to make a motion that way.
So my question with that is, I guess maybe it's the flip side of that almost. What I'm more concerned is, if we make a recommendation of A or B, and I think from what I'm hearing, neither one is going to pass unanimously, you know, whichever motion, you know, ends up getting made by this committee, is the county board then precluded from considering the other option? Or no, because it's in the staff report?
No, they are absolutely able to choose either of them, regardless of what our recommendation is. We are a recommending body, we're not a deciding body. We do not bind the county board with any of our recommendations.
Okay. I wonder if, though, I appreciate that we do not tell the county board what to do, we can simply advise, I do wonder if we advised on either A or B singularly, if it would make it more difficult for the county board to ponder the alternative. And just thinking out loud, I myself see merit in both options A and B, and I could see myself voting potentially for either one of them. And I don't know if other commissioners fall into that realm with me.
If we end up being split on it, that gives information to the board, too. You know, they can see that they're, that reasonable people differ in their choices on this. So regardless of how we recommend, it is all information that the county board will be able to use in their deliberations.
Thank you.
Commissioner, let's see, who was next? Commissioner Weir? You're on mute.
That was a mistake.
Okay. Commissioner Siegel?
Yeah, I just wanted to join Commissioner Lantome in expressing how the county board considers our recommendations. They're really only recommendations. Sometimes they embrace them, adopt them, find them helpful, thank us. Sometimes we're completely ignored. So just my experience over the years. I wanted to thank Commissioner Weir. I wanted to thank Commissioner Weir for responding to my question or my practical question, and I wanted to come back on that point. And perhaps this is a question for, that Mr. Krim can illuminate. My question would be, yes, we are opening the streets to more participants, and that is as it should be. I'm very supportive of that, along with others who have made those testimonials. But I, it just seems to me that staff would not have recommended Option B had they thought that the street network couldn't handle the number, theoretical number of cars. So could you just address that point?
Sure. I'll point out by saying that the program has never attempted to match the number of permits to the number of spaces available. And that ratio varies quite a bit, depending on where you are in the county. There's one part of Zone 1, there are three permits issued for every on-street space that we estimate is there, whereas in some areas, it's like closer one to one. In terms of the four, I would look at that as more of the, you know, the status quo. Our recommendation is Option A. One of the reasons why we wanted to call out Option B, though, is, you know, the board did recommend or did say that it wanted to advertise an option where it remains at four. And we put in Option B because we wanted to clearly explain why we recommend that if the board goes to four, we have the same pricing for everybody. Because you remember that the language put forward at the adoption or the advertisement hearing had four permits but differential pricing. And we wanted to be clear that, you know, while our first choice is Option A, if the board chooses to go with four permits for all, we do not think it merits the effort to differentiate the pricing.
But, so, just one follow-up question real quick. Should the board, since they wanted to include this option in the scope, and you've honored it with a place in your recommendations, although it's not your preferred one, thank you for clarifying that, should the board elect for the four permits for households? And we did encounter an issue of supply and demand, a mismatch going forward, and that created problems. I mean, you could revisit the issue, correct? I mean, all through this, there are assumptions being made that could be changed by, we have COVID, or we don't have COVID, or the technologies change, people use more car sharing. You know, these things change over time. And it's, you know, it's not, to me, it's not really a one and done. It's a kind of a one and done for a while or until you stub your toe on a real problem. I mean, I'm sure you've thought about that.
Yes, I think that, as always, nothing is done when something's adopted forever. We do want to be looking at this program sooner than 15 years from now, which is the timeframe between the last time we looked at this and now, although we are getting faster, because the last time was like 35 years between reviews. But I think the important thing to remember, though, is that obviously this program is very important to a lot of residents. So anytime we think about changing something, you know, whether we think it's fundamental, whether we as staff think it's fundamental or not, because I've been proven wrong about what I thought would be most important to residents and what I thought would be less important, it's going to require a lot of time and effort to undergo that kind of engagement. So I think that's really just the word of caution about how frequently we'll revisit things. If, you know, things will, if something gets escalated to the point where it's untenable and we get a directive to work on it, we will work on it. But short of a complete catastrophe, it will be, you know, some years before we will want to take up the effort to go through this program.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Siegel. At this point, I would like to move on to the two-hour paid parking issue. I expect we're going to have a robust discussion on that. Does anybody want to leave that off? I see Commissioner Bagley has her hand raised. You're on mute. You're on mute.
Thank you. Long day. Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I do want to again thank Mr. Krim and other staff members. I have followed this since its evolution in 2017. And it's, your position is very difficult because you can't possibly please everybody with what you're, you know, attempting to do here, and I recognize that. We had a lot of speakers tonight that represented the RB corridor, Route 1 corridor, that is heavily impacted, particularly by this part of the proposed program. And this is one of the areas where I am having a hard time being supportive of this. So I have a number of questions. First, I do want to mention that I, 10 years ago, walked the petition around. I had 100% participation in my small street a block and a half to the Virginia Square Metro. Parking was bad then, it has progressively gotten worse. So I would like to ask a few questions, and I'm going to ask them all at once. And so the first one is, and this is, if I heard correctly at Transportation Commission the other night, and looking at the slide that was referenced, the fees cover the program, that if I heard correctly at Transportation and looking at the slide, it doesn't appear as though revenue from the two-hour paid parking was included. So I would just want a confirmation or not. So then my next question is, so what is the anticipated revenue? And what science or modeling or whatever has this conclusion been based on? And then I would be curious also to know, what is the cost of putting up new signage? And things like that, because that will be required in that. I also would like to know what study or scientific behavior modeling evidence is there that brings one to a conclusion that those who currently illegally park in an RPP area and most of the time get away with it will now stop and see the sign and go to their app and actually pay to do same when they have been getting away with it all along? Also, I'm curious, as a resident, however, I don't, I'm trying to think beyond my own personal participation in this, because I don't think I was appointed to this commission, except to look at the broader picture of what's best for Arlington. So for current RPP residents, the process is to contact the non-emergency police to report illegally parked cars. And then sometimes, I don't do all the calling in my neighborhood, there are a lot of people who do. But one of the more recent times that I called, pre-pandemic, I was asked to give license plate numbers, which is fine. So my question is, will the staff be, who are answering the non-emergency line, if they have a license plate number, would they be able to tell from their equipment there that that particular car, without coming out, that that particular car has paid this two-hour app thing? And then my last question is, how many enforcement officers were they? Were there 10 years ago? How many are there now? And how many will there be in the future? Thank you.
Okay, I count six. If I miss one, let me know. So fees and paid parking revenue. You are correct. The modeling that we have done does not include paid parking revenue, mostly because we don't have a clear sense of how much demand there would actually be for the short-term parking. However, if we were to find that that revenue was coming in in like a substantial way, we could certainly look at offsetting then the cost of the permits to match that. We just didn't really have a lot of information upon which to model how much revenue would come from that part of the program or the proposed program. So that kind of, I think, also answers question two, right? Did I get your, what is the anticipated revenue? That was the second question?
Yes.
Okay. So the new signage, the cost, I do not have that on hand. I can get back to you with that. But yes, there is a cost for that, and we are scheduling that out and working on the costs that it would require to make all that change if the board were to adopt two-hour parking. I, you know, I hear your point about why would SCOF laws choose to pay for park, to park when they don't obey the rules now? I think, I'll step back and say that I understand that the program, that enforcement is not viewed as sufficient. And I am not able to offer you increased enforcement as part of this program, which I think kind of, I actually don't know how many enforcement officers were present 10 years ago. I don't, unfortunately, I don't know what they are now. But we have discussed the possibility of adding enforcement officers to this program. But that has not gone anywhere. So what I am bringing to you is the idea of allowing short-term paid parking, you know, to basically better match one of the policies about maximizing on-street parking in the MTP. But it is coming to you with basically the same enforcement regime as you have now. So if that's simply not efficient or sufficient, then I get that. And, you know, I respect that point of view on it. In terms of contacting non-emergency police and asking about the license plate number, it is, I believe that police would be able to look up, you know, from a desk whether somebody is parked legally or not. I'd have to check on that. I mean, they certainly have equipment when they go out into the field that checks that. Whether they would reveal the answer as to whether or not it's parked legally to a resident, I don't know. There might be some policies around confidentiality there or something that I don't fully know. I do have on my to-do list this whole issue of making public information about whether somebody has paid or not. So I can certainly have that for the board meeting. But in terms of the police, they certainly have access to who is parked legally and who isn't. I don't know that they would be willing to share that with somebody calling in. But I can check on that.
Yeah, I would not want the police to tell me, I would not expect the police to tell me somebody's parked legally or not. I would be making the call, hopefully, so that they would come and ticket the car if it isn't. So really, that was not the point there. So I just have one more question. How do you overcome then, if we're not including that the fees are covered, which they already are by, you know, increasing the permit costs? So how do you overcome the perception that this is not, this facet of the recommendation isn't just a revenue-building scheme for the county?
Okay. So, I mean, I'll start off by saying that actually, well, first of all, you know, I haven't included revenue in the model. So I think if it were a revenue-making scheme, I probably would have tried to get some sort of number. The second thing is, and I'll say this in terms of what I say anytime we talk about, you know, meter fees, I don't look at charging for parking as a source of money. I look at it, or for, you know, the general fund. I look at it as a way to manage demand. And in the case of the short-term parking and charging for that parking, that is there because it at least makes it easier to enforce people who haven't paid, or it makes it easier to enforce than simply the time-limited parking, when somebody has to go out and inspect the vehicle twice, because they have to know that the vehicle has been there longer than the time allowed. So at least with a meter-based or paid parking, you only have to pass by the vehicle once to know that it is there illegally, and then they can be ticketed. But the point is not to raise revenue. Whether that, you know, whether that logic is enough to convince members of the public, otherwise, I don't know. But those, that's what I can offer as the reasons why it is not meant to garner revenue.
Gotcha. Thank you, Mr. Krim.
Thank you, Commissioner Bagley. Commissioner Morton, I think you were next, and then Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Bagley asked a few of my questions. Again, I apologize, you may have talked about this, I didn't see it in the report. I just wanted to get a little bit of clarification about enforcement of both the EZ Park and the Park Mobile. There's no way to actually limit somehow the sequential renewals of the EZ Park. And with respect to the difficulty of enforcing something like Park Mobile, I imagine it's a combination of a technical issue and a staff issue. But if you had increased budget, you know, manpower, would you be able to do it? And have you thought about the same issue of paying for the enforcement with the fees? And I am wondering, I know, you know, we can't have drones here in Arlington, probably, but are there some sort of tech issues or technological solutions to this off-site enforcement issue that other cities are thinking about? That could help us imagine that, you know, two years from now even, we wouldn't have this problem?
I would say at this point, it really is more of a manpower issue. There is, we are upgrading the software system that our program uses such that we could introduce license plate reader-based enforcement. However, so that is a potential technical solution because it greatly increases the productivity of our enforcement staff, because they don't have to get out, look at the car, you know, you're just basically driving along, and until you hit a vehicle that is not properly paid, you then stop and ticket that, or inspect just to double-check and then keep moving. We have decided not to include decisions about license plate recognition in the review because we recognize that there are important questions about what we want in terms of a balance of enforcement and privacy protections and concerns, real and perceived, about the state having, or the county, having access to information about where license plates are located. So we will be bringing that forward as part of like a separate discussion at a later point, because we just didn't want to fold in something like that into this. So that is a potential technical solution. But I will say, you know, it can increase the productivity of enforcement staff, but, you know, you still need to get the people out there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Morton. Commissioner Hughes?
Thanks, Commissioner Lantelme. I will, for my fellow commissioners' preview, I will be making a motion that would support, make a motion to remove this option and advise the county board as such. Whether I second and whether it votes, it's not there. But I do think we do owe it to our community to actually put this on the board so that it is an area. I mean, it is a rare day for my fellow commissioners that you have two Pike Civic Associations, Lion Village and Aurora Hills, all on the same call, all saying the same thing about something. That is not something we hear. That's our three major planning areas saying the same thing. So I do think I want to say that. And the reason I do feel like this is a step too far, and I want to make sure that all know that ahead of time before I make the motion, is quite clear. We've expanded the eligibility of this program significantly without the paid parking. We've expanded it to landlords, you've expanded it to onsite contractors, we've expanded it to group homes, we've expanded it to teachers. I cannot wait for the disparate impact staff. I look forward to seeing. I look forward to seeing that one later on. That's a plug for someone else. But the reality of it is, we've expanded it to our buy-right developments. We've expanded it all around the edges. All of those people still are, have one thing in common. They're still mostly your neighbors, whether they're temporarily your neighbors for only 10 hours a day or they're your neighbors on a long-term basis. This next step of the paid parking is a step too far in my mind. And so I will be making a motion that advises us not to do it. I don't think it's worth trying to skirt around how to figure out a way to do it, block by block, et cetera, et cetera. I think it's a step too far right now. And so I think that's what I'll make a motion for the effect of. Thank you, Commissioner Lantoni.
I thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Commissioner Weir, you're next, and after that, Commissioner Steinberger.
In response to Commissioner Morton's questions, which I had as well, and came around, I just want to commend Mr. Krim and you and your colleagues for the decision that you've made to recommend these zoning ordinance changes independently of the technological means by which we do the enforcement. I think that automated license plate readers raise a whole host of Fourth and First Amendment, freedom of association, freedom of speech, freedom of religious practice issues that I don't believe this commission is prepared to or even should be thinking about. But I also don't think that we should be thinking about as a part of how we go about approaching this portion of the zoning ordinance. So Commissioner Morton, I, at first, really, even in speaking with some other members of this commission about it, was really gung-ho about, well, why can't we just use the automated license plate readers that we're already using? Until I remembered, one, we're talking about the ZO, and two, wait a minute, that's just a whole can of worms that I'm not sure we want to be getting into. So thank you, Mr. Krim, for proceeding the way that you decided to.
Thank you, Commissioner Weir. Commissioner Steinberger.
Thank you. I wanted to voice my support for the position that others and our Commissioner Hughes indicated, the motion that he's indicated he's going to make. I am compelled, from what we've heard from kind of community testimony, that there is a large sort of commonality to what we're hearing, that the two-hour parking is the maybe fundamental concern that we're hearing in terms of criticism of the proposed revisions. And I think it bears, at this point, we're moving that so that we can get a lot of other positive change forward in a productive manner and not move forward with something that we're hearing a lot of opposition to. And understandably, I think the rollout of such at a time during a pandemic when parking trends are not normalized to what we expect them to be, and we don't maybe necessarily know what they will look like again in the short and or medium term, it may make a fair amount of sense to hold on that any kind of a uniform two-hour parking plan. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Steinberger. Commissioner Weir, your hand is still up, or you want to back in, or has you just forgot to take it down? Okay. I'm going to raise a couple of things, too. My comments are, I actually went back to the parking and curb space management elements of the master transportation plan. And there's a few things in it that I think are fairly interesting and relevant to our discussion of the paid parking and allowing paid parking in the RPP zones. First, if the statement is, in deciding how many, where to give a zoning, "The threshold are designed to accommodate a general desire that a resident in the single-family dwelling area will usually be able to find an available space within one block of their home," you know, while also ensuring efficient use of on-street spaces. You know, so we're looking that people should be able to park close to their homes. I note, and the other part of this same element is, one of the goals of the RPP program is to limit overspill. It's to, for areas that are in close proximity to high-density facilities next to low-density residential areas while preserving the character of each. So, you know, part to managing the parking supply. But the idea is not to encourage parking from commercial areas in the residential neighborhoods. Now, we may disagree with this, these elements of the MTP, but the point is they are our official policy. They are the transportation plan for this county. And I think we have to recognize that it's there and whether what we're looking at is consistent with the comp plan. This is an element of the comprehensive plan. Looking at a couple of the neighborhoods, certainly I'm familiar with the RV corridor. Commissioner Bagley's raised it also. There are blocks that are, in fact, here's a picture of the, actually, the, our MTP. I don't know if it comes through, but that picture is what Ms. Bagley is talking about. It might even be her block for, well, I know, all I know. But the picture actually shows 100% parked. Every single spot is taken in that, and it is part of an RPP. So in Lion Village, a number of the blocks that I'm familiar with, right off of Wilson Boulevard in the zone, are 100% parked. And Commissioner Hughes, you raised the block that's 24/7. One of those blocks is 24/7, and it is parked, fully parked by residential parkers 100% of the time. If we put paid parking on that, those people would be parking more than a block away from their house, which is contrary to the goals or the, what's hortatory in the MTP. The concern I have with the paid parking, which I am open to as a concept and have seen that there's reasons to do it, but having it be a one-size-fits-all is, I don't think that works for us. It does not work for the zones. There are, because we have different, we've recognized that because we have different hours for different blocks because they are so different. Going four blocks away from Wilson Boulevard, parking, there's lots of parking all the time. Whereas right up against Wilson Boulevard, there's never parking all of the time. So I don't think by putting in paid parking in these neighborhoods, and that includes along Columbia Pike, I assume that they're running into similar issues, it simply doesn't really comport, I believe, with the terms of a comprehensive plan, specifically the master transportation plan and the parking elements on it. I would be, will be voting against having the, at this point, having the paid parking component be included in this. Anyway. That's how I'm looking at it. Any further comments, discussion on enforcement and two-hour paid parking? Okay. We might be wrapping this up then. I think we might be ready to start moving on to motions. Do I have a motion out there? Commissioner Weir, do you have some that you are willing to start us off on?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have, I'm just going to share my screen momentarily. And it was bugging out on me earlier today, so my apologies if I have to futz around with this to get it going. Let's start by seeing if I can make it work. So I have a motion that I'm going to move, and hopefully someone will second it to get it onto the table. And then I am going to immediately move to consider by section, which is a parliamentary procedure that allows us to go paragraph by paragraph, getting to a majority or consensus, probably a majority, on each point before then we come back and vote on the main motion. This is kind of what we do. The difference is that I'll be presenting the entire motion before we, that I'm moving at the beginning. Hopefully, hopefully, we have a little bit less of a votorama than we often do in these bigger, complex amendments. So that being said, I'm going to try to turn the screen share on. And I move then, I'm going to, I'm going to make one quick. This is just for the purpose of getting the motion on the floor. So I move that the Planning Commission recommends that the Arlington County Board adopt the following changes to the Residential Permit Parking Program, or RPP. "The county board should adopt the ordinance shown in Attachments A and B to the staff report to repeal, reenact, and recodify the Residential Permit Parking Program." Article 8, Chapter 14.2 of the Arlington County Code. "The county board should adopt Option A, which bases the number of RPP permits each household may receive on whether the household has available off-street parking. The county board include the two-hour paid parking option." And then forgive me, I was missing one section here that I am just copying and pasting into place. And that is the other staff recommendation that the county board adopt the ordinance to amend, reenact, and recodify Article 1, Division 1, Section 14.2-71, fines for non-moving vehicles to address fines for parking in violation of Article 8 of Chapter 14.2, as shown in Amendments A and C. So I hope that someone might second this. Thank you, Commissioner Schroll. I then move that the commission consider by section. That requires a second.
Second. Mr. Hughes.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Mr. Chair, if you may, or can we get a vote on whether to adopt or whether to consider by a section?
Yes. Let me go down the list here. The main motion on the floor is to go by section. This is procedural.
Mr. Chair, perhaps you could just ask for objection?
Yes. Are there any objections?
Yes. I have, I'm sorry, Commissioner Siegel.
All right, take the roll. He's called the roll call vote, so Jim's got to go down the vote now.
Fair enough.
I do have a question. I do have a question about the procedure. Could I ask the question? So, just so I understand, Commissioner Weir, normally when we do this, we have a main motion and then amendments. This is, that means you can vote against an amendment, but for the main motion?
Yes.
Is that option available?
Yes.
In this case? Okay. That's fine.
It's just that I'm putting the whole scaffold out before we, at the beginning. Or maybe it's not the whole scaffold. Maybe someone can, someone can still move to amend the main motion.
I actually approve of that. I think that's a good idea. Okay.
Sir. Commissioner, sir. I have a question. I'm still confused, I think. So we're not immediately voting on what we see on our screens in front of us? This is just the outline of where Commissioner Weir is going with the paragraph-by-paragraph vote?
The vote before the floor, Commissioners Steinberger, is to consider paragraph by paragraph. Consider seriatum.
Okay. It is not literally reading what's on my screen. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yep.
Yes. Okay. So again, we are voting on procedure that we will go basically bullet by bullet and vote on those. Commissioner Weir?
Aye.
Commissioner Siegel?
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes?
Aye.
Commissioner McGurran's out here. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger?
Aye.
Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. Okay. It passes. Now, Commissioner Weir, do you have a further motion?
So I would move that the Planning Commission endorse the first bullet as written.
I'll second that.
I have a unanimous consent, I don't know, motion request. It's just a language, more specificity to the staff report dated January 31, 2021. I think we should routinely indicate that.
Where would that go, Commissioner?
Right there. Right there.
In the yellow.
Where Commissioner Weir has indicated, just to indicate which report we're talking about.
Do we have any objections to that?
That's all.
She made a unanimous consent request, so, Mr. Chairman, you can just say without objection.
Right. There's no objections, it is then passed. So we'll add that, Commissioner Weir. Right, it's done.
All right.
Okay. So we have a second for that. Do we have any discussion? Not hearing any. Let's then move on to the vote for this. This is Bullet 1. Commissioner Weir?
Aye.
Commissioner Siegel?
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes?
Aye.
Commissioner McGurran? She's not here. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger?
Aye.
Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Very good. That is passed. We have another motion.
I move that the Planning Commission endorse the second bullet presently highlighted.
Second.
Okay. Now, for discussion. Now, what we're talking about is Option A. We haven't highlighted it yet. That is the, so we know what we're talking about. Option A is the restricting the number of permits to, for, for homes, areas that do not have off-street parking, and allowing only two per household for dwelling units that have, that do have off-street parking. Okay, we all understand that. That's been seconded, and we can move ahead with the vote on it. Commissioner Weir?
Aye.
Commissioner Siegel?
Nay.
Commissioner Schroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes?
Aye.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger? You on a mute?
I'm nay.
Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Nay.
And I will vote, this is a tough one. I'll vote nay as well. It nonetheless, 1, 2, 3, 4, it passes 7 to 4. Okay. Let's move on. Do we have a further motion, Commissioner Weir?
Yes. I move that the commission endorse Bullet 3 as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Schroll seconds.
Mr. Chair.
Okay. Yes. Commissioner Hughes.
I'd like to propose a substitute motion.
For Bullet 3, correct?
For Bullet, we're only taking, right, we're only taking them in sections, and you've only proposed for this section, so it's a substitute for the section that has been moved and seconded by Commissioner Schroll. Mr. Chair, I move that the county board direct the county manager to craft an ordinance and policy that precludes temporary paid parking within the RPP.
Second.
So that was, okay. So discussion. Can you speak to your motion, Commissioner Hughes?
Sure. As I've said to all of you earlier, I believe that the paid parking option is the step that goes too far within this entire ordinance. I think that staff's done a great job expanding the eligibility for many areas that are well-deserved and and, and long overdue within the RPP. But I do think that the core purpose of the RPP is to benefit the neighbors and neighborhood, and recognizing who our neighbors are, like our byright apartment buildings, is separating the distinct from allowing the option for anyone from DCU or Fairfax or anywhere to come and park within the neighborhood who may or may not have any association with those neighbors. And knowing that all people within the RPP will now have the option of purchasing an RPP visitor pass and have adequate parking for their neighbors, for their guests, is sufficient for me to recognize that the two-hour paid parking option is a step too far. So that for me, that's why I do not support the addition of paid parking within the RPP zones.
Commissioner Hughes, I've, I've given you control of the window. Would you be so kind as to paste the language in where indicated?
Sure, I included it actually inside of the text field, but I can do it.
I may be able to do that then, unless you've already, unless you're already on it.
No, I'll let you, I'll let you go with it, because I don't want to mess it up in Team Stand. It's in the chat field, the second one at the bottom, starting with the, because I skip the "I move the PC" since we included that.
Thank you for that unsanctioned use of the chat field.
Okay, Commissioner Siegel, you have a comment?
Yes, I, I do have a comment. I, I'm supportive of the substitute motion, although I have a few qualms that I just want to put out there, which is that they're, that, going back to Commissioner Weir's very eloquent, elegant framing of what we have public space for, we, we do have retail areas that, but the residential areas that could benefit from people being able to park for a couple of hours, run in, get lunch, get, buy cigarettes or, or whatever. And, and I really am, I have a concern about that, so I just want to put that down for the record. I also want to say that I, I think the one-size-fits-all axiom or principle really doesn't, doesn't, is not suitable in this case, because I think there are vastly different contexts for some of our, our zones. I, I don't, at the moment, I can't sort of frame a motion that would, or maybe I can, but this is not the time, time to do that. I can add that later, so I'll leave it at that, and I will support the substitute motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Siegel.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, point of clarity, point of clarity, Commissioner Weir, it's only the bottom, so the, that's a separate motion I'll make later, but the, go over to the, yep, delete, no, that's the one we want to keep, just that, and then everything else above it is gone.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, delete that. Yes, Commissioner Lantome.
If we, for the original motion that Commissioner Weir had advanced, if we vote against that, would not that have the same effect as your motion?
Commissioner Lantome, actually not quite. So if you'll notice, mine is very specific about temporary paid parking within the RPP. It's not about one hour, two hour, four hours, or any other variation within it. So I wanted to make sure it was clear that the, the issue is the paid parking, not the duration or any other aspect of it.
I see, thank you. That's a good clarification. Commissioner, Mr. Krim, your hand has been up. Do you have a comment on this?
I do. I want to make sure that we get the clear, the clear sense of the commission on this. The current ordinance allows meters to be installed within RPP zones that then exempts people who have permits and passes. That has never been utilized. Also, we do allow free, sorry, free short-term parking. That is not common, but does exist. So I just wanted to make sure the commission was aware of that and understand if your preference would actually be that all of those provisions for short-term parking be removed, or that they remain as they are today.
Minister Chair, if you mind, I think that the sense, the sense of my, the sense of my motion is to reflect the changes proposed within the, the RPP, and that's, I think, should, should allow the public record to reflect such.
So Commissioner Hughes, since we haven't actually voted on this, and I don't even think we've heard a second, I think we can still do some wordsmithing. Am I right that, that basically, that, that you basically are saying?
Smith away, but Commissioner Bagley seconded it.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
But, go ahead, what would you like to change?
Well, if we do have a second, it's, it's a little, it's a little trickier. We haven't, and, what's the easiest way to do this?
Is it a wordsmithing that could be unanimous consent? It's just changing some words, or is it way more substantive that actually changed the meaning of it?
So Commissioner Hughes, in light of, of Mr. Krim's comments, am I, am I correct in understanding that basically what you're saying is that the county board should not include the proposed two-hour paid parking option?
That's the intent of this motion, and Mr. Krim's comments were that, A, we have an ordinance that has zero effect because the paid meter option we've never implemented, and B, the free parking has nothing to do with paid parking.
So would, would you be amenable to seeking unanimous consent to withdraw your motion and replace it with simply the county board should not include the two-hour paid parking option?
I won't object to it, but I just, I think that it's, I think it should be clear that it's not about the duration of it, it is about that the paid parking option is, is the crux of the issue, Dan.
But I think that Mr. Krim's point is that we, that the current ordinance has provisions for paid parking, that, that, that your objection is to the, the changes regarding paid parking in the, in the proposed amendments to the ordinance. And so if that's the case, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't, well, now I'm getting into the substance, but I'm, I'm trying to begin with something that's clear.
I seek unanimous consent to add the word revision after the word ordinance within my subject motion.
Could you, could you read it?
So now we should direct the county manager to craft an, or, any, any ordinance revision and policy that precludes temporary paid parking within the RPP.
Oh, I'm sorry, what?
You're right, I'm just, I hate wordsmithing at ten o'clock at night, Daniel.
Yeah, I don't blame you.
Daniel, I'm, Commissioner, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with putting the not include the two-hour paid option as long as the substance of our conversation reflects that it's not just about staff changing the duration, it's about subsequently the paid parking option.
Can I make a comment? Are, are we at?
Yes, Commissioner Siegel.
Okay, I, I guess I, I would have, I would have voted against Commissioner Weir's motion. I think I'm going to have to vote against this motion. I can't support it because of the, my, the one-size-fits-all problem, and this is too definitive. Unless, and I'll just ask, at this point, I would, I would accept this if we could add some language that Commissioner Lantome had, something like what he had suggested before, such, and I'll just suggest it if, if I have to make a second motion after voting on this motion, I will, but to direct staff to evaluate the impacts of temporary paid parking. In other words, that we're directing, we're, we're recommending to the board that we don't, we won't go with the, a policy that includes, this is different language than you have, temporary paid parking without an evaluate, without staff being able to evaluate the impacts of temporary paid parking on neighborhoods and abutting commercial areas. I think that needs to be evaluated on a, on a case-by-case basis, on a zone-by-zone basis, but that, that's not what you're saying, and, and I think that's not what you would accept. But that, I've just put that out there for commissioners to think about.
Commissioner Patel, you have your hand up?
Thank you. I would, I agree with, with Commissioner Siegel. I would not be inclined to vote for either the motion as it was initially proposed by Commissioner Weir, or the one that is currently proposed by Commissioner Hughes. However, I would agree to vote for a motion that indicated that this would go back to staff for further evaluation on the criteria that's already been articulated.
Commissioner Peterson?
So I was originally inclined to support Commissioner Weir's original proposal, but then he seemed inclined to what seemed like a 180 to support Commissioner Hughes's. So I was just wondering if I am misunderstanding the, the change that's being proposed. Commissioner Weir, can you speak to your original proposal and, and why you were suggesting that we vote on that?
Well, I, I candidly, Commissioner Peterson, I prefer the two-hour parking option. I, I think that, that there are a whole host of different needs that are met by two-hour parking, that all fall under the category of needing to manage parking demand, and some of those are restaurant row. I recognize that the timing doesn't exactly overlap, so that's not really a perfect example. And some of them are, you know, visitors and needs that aren't anticipated under the existing circumstances. I have a friend that I frequently visit who's in an RPP zone, and it just so happens that I visit during times that aren't covered, but it could also happen that I visit during times that are covered, and it would be very nice if, if there were a two-hour meter option at some point. So I, you know, I, I think that there are all kinds of reasons to allow paid parking. My suggestion that, that we insert the word "not" was merely trying to help Commissioner Hughes, maybe at the risk of being a little paternalistic, but trying to help create something that was a little bit more clear in light of Mr. Krim's comments. Does that make any sense?
Yes, and so do you intend to repropose your original motion if Commissioner Hughes's motion does not pass?
If his, well, if his, excuse me, I just got a cramp. If his doesn't pass, then mine is the one that's on the floor. Pardon me, sorry.
Okay, thank you very much.
Right, but I would raise, Commissioner Patel, is that even if, because, my concern is that the one-size-fits-all, well, Commissioner, well, Mr. Krim is absolutely correct that right now the ordinance does allow metered parking. Metered parking really implies you're going to be doing a block-by-block-by-block, you're not just going to go in immediately and put parking meters on every single possible space within a zone, whereas here, that's exactly what we're going to be doing. It's going to be paid parking within the entire zone. And every zone, there's no distinction between zones, there's no distinction between blocks within zones, and there really are valid reasons not to put it on specific blocks. We're not going to be looking at that at all, because it's just too much work to do. So that's my biggest concern with this. I'm not opposed to the idea of two-hour parking here and there. There are places where it could make perfect sense and be very logical, and of course, the ordinance does provide for that very thing. But the point is, it doesn't cover everything, it should not cover everything. That is what I very much object to, and why I would have to vote against the original motion, because it is so, it's so comprehensive, whereas we have huge differences in needs throughout the county, and it simply does not reflect that. Does that help at all, where, which would imply a third motion if, if the first one fails?
Could I, could I ask, I had, I mean, I, we're a little messy tonight, but I suggested language for a third motion. I think your understanding, Commissioner Lantome, of how the current ordinance works for metered parking, do you, procedural, do we want to vote these two motions and see where we are? If they're all, if they're voted down, then, then we can go to a third option?
My recommendation, Commissioner Siegel, is that we dispose of Commissioner Hughes's motion, and then, based on my read of where people are at, and I could have my numbers wrong, but, but, but we dispose of that and then get to a third motion that would replace the current bullet.
Commissioner Lantome, to save you the time, and with Commissioner Bagley's support, I will withdraw my motion in favor of hearing your third motion. Commissioner Bagley, you have to agree to that, though.
I agree.
The motion is withdrawn. Your motion's.
We hear no objections, so the motion is withdrawn. Okay, so where are we now?
So we are still considering this third bullet, and I believe that someone may be about to propose another revision to it.
I think it's a, it's an amendment in the nature of a substitute.
That's right.
For that third bullet.
Okay, do we, do we have somebody who's willing to make that motion?
I am. I'll try, I'll try it, see where it goes, but I would use the, well.
You can work off of what's up there on the screen now.
I can work off what's up on the screen, I think it works. Bear with me. County board include the two-hour paid parking option on a case-by-case basis, directing staff to evaluate the impacts on, in, in, on, sorry, it is like neighborhoods, abutting commercial areas, some, something like that. Maybe I need some help there. The county board include the two-hour parking on a case, or you can say zone-by-zone basis. I don't know.
Evaluating on a block-by-block basis?
Block-by-block or zone-by-zone? If, if.
Block-by-block, even within zones, we have.
Block-by-block, since that seems to comport better with the current ordinance, directing staff to evaluate the impacts on neighborhoods, abutting commercial areas. That, that's, that's what I would say.
I'm a little worried about the abutting commercial areas, because we also have some other neighborhoods that might have overparked blocks that are in more residential areas. I want to make sure all the, all these zones are, would be included by this.
Mr. Chairman, I think, has that been moved by commissioners?
No, it hasn't been, it hasn't been formally moved or seconded at this point, so we can, we can work with that, I believe.
I, I would accept that. You can, let's do it that way, it's late, but block-by-block, there's directing staff to evaluate the impacts on neighborhoods. You can take out abutting commercial areas, and that opens it up.
Okay.
That was going to be my recommendation.
Okay, did you get that, Commissioner Weir? Take out the words "abutting commercial areas." Commissioner Steinberger agrees with that, and Commissioner Siegel? Okay.
And I would also say, do we want, do we want to suggest that the county board direct staff to continue studying this matter?
I think it's applied by this.
Studying and evaluating, to me, are the same, but I'm open.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can we say?
Yes, Commissioner Patel.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I just dropped my phone. That's, is there a way that?
Wait, I think it's very hard to hear you, can you get closer to your phone?
So sorry, can you guys hear me better now?
You might not be on speaker, Davaji.
Okay, how's that?
I can hear you well enough.
Okay.
Now I can hear you well.
Okay. Can, I'm, I'm sorry, this is just like really kind of nitpicky, but can we say that the county board include the two-hour paid parking option on a, on a, on a case, excuse me, on a block-by-block basis, subject to staff analysis on the impacts of each affected neighborhood?
Yes, I would accept. Yes, I would accept that and take out the word "but." Yes, that's much better, thank you.
I like that, I think.
Okay. Any further comments on this? I think we might have a motion that Commissioner Siegel can informally make.
I move that we amend, this is not, that, that, this is not an amendment of the main motion. Give me the language, Commissioner Weir.
You would be seeking unanimous consent to replace the bullet with the text as it currently exists.
Okay, seek unanimous consent to replace the bullet, the previous bullet, with the following language. The county board include the two-hour paid parking option on a block-by-block basis, subject to staff analysis of each affected neighborhood. I made a unanimous consent, so.
Right, you've heard no objections, so it is now in place.
Object, no, I was object, I objected.
Okay, no, Commissioner, Commissioner Hughes objected, so.
So shall I move it? I move, may I move the language without reading it? It's right there.
I'll second.
Okay. It's seconded by Commissioner Weir. Advanced by Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Siegel, and seconded by Commissioner Weir. Do we have any further discussion on the language on this motion?
So Commissioner Lynn, tell me.
Who was it, Commissioner Hughes?
Thanks, Commissioner Lynn, I don't, I don't intend to support it, so I have to make my reason known. I consider the RPP to be a very disproportionately impactful item of our current code. And I do not like the block-by-block analysis. I don't even like its current iteration in many ways shapes or forms. And so I cannot support this. My belief is quite clear, if two-hours parking is fair for someone, it's fair for all. And I don't necessarily think it is, so therefore I will not be supporting this motion.
Okay, I understand. Commissioner Bagley?
Yes, I want to align myself with Commissioner Hughes. I just can't do this to my neighbors. I just really can't. We have discussed this bullet more than any of the others, and this topic more than any of the rest of, you know, the proposed, the proposal in general. And this, the staff has already done three-plus years of analysis. They don't have time, it's not going to work. And this bothers me because it makes it look like we're okay with two-hour paid parking as long as it's on a block-by-block basis. Who's going to do that? And when is it going to get done? And it's just, it's just not fair. I can't do it to my neighbors.
Okay, do we have any other, oh yes, Commissioner Steinberger. Actually, could we actually read the language out loud for those who are participating by telephone who cannot?
The, the bullet would read that the county board include, this is a, this is a bullet that is, and a list of recommendations. And the bullet, the, the, the planning commission recommends that the Arlington County Board adopt the following changes to the residential permit parking program. And this particular recommendation that we are focusing on right now is, reads the county board include, should include, the two-hour paid parking option on a block-by-block basis, subject to staff analysis of each affected neighborhood.
Okay, one way that we can also make clear where we're going with this is in our report to the county board, we can emphasize that our concern was treating entire, treating the entire county as one giant zone, and that everyone is treated the same, and that a park would be in all zones and all places at all times. You know, that, all the, treated all the same. And that that is what the concern we have. We can, we can definitely expand upon that in our report, explaining what we're trying to accomplish here.
Mr. Chair, if I, may I comment as well?
Yes, Commissioner Weir.
So I somewhat agree with you, Commissioner Bagley, but, but I actually, in this case, I I want us to be fine with including two-hour paid parking. I am willing to live with a condition that would allow blocks as appropriate to be exempted from that. You know, I think, I've talked with, with some people, you and I haven't had the opportunity to talk with you about it specifically, but I've talked with a number of people about the area between south of Washington Boulevard and I think north of 13th Street. Is that the, the street that I think that, that there's a sliver of, of places along there? You know, in Barcraft, as we heard tonight, where I live, we have a number of blocks, we have a number of blocks that have free two-hour parking. We also have a number of blocks across the street from the Foreign Service Center that do not have a free, that are RPP, but do not have a, an option. I, I think that, I think that we need to have the ability to use paid parking to manage, to manage parking demand. There does need to be some enforcement. And I, I left out, for the sake of clarity, I left out a, a bullet that I would have liked to have seen added here, just because this is the first time that we've done anything quite like this. But, but I would, I would probably want to add a bullet that says something to the effect of, and if there's any interest in this, I'll draft it in the next minute, that, that if you're going to enforce, if the county is going to enforce paid parking over here, that it also has to enforce paid parking over there. And that manpower can't, a lack of manpower just can't be the end of it, right? You know, that's, that we have to be on record, asking the county board to do that. But I, I do think that we need to have some flexibility to say that we should have two-hour paid parking and, and, and that we, that the presumption shouldn't be that we have to litigate it every time to be able to manage the demand. That's, that's where I stand.
Commissioner Morton?
I'm liking this better, but the issue you raised about enforcement still isn't really solved by this, so I can't see supporting this bullet.
What we can do is do an additional amendment, throwing this out, not that I'm making one right now, but do what Transportation Commission is, and say that, that recommend that there be a robust enforcement for any, you know, any two-hour parking that would be allowed in a, in a residential parking zone. I'm just throwing that out there. Commissioner Steinberger?
So, thank you. I, I understand, I'm sympathetic that the enforcement issue is still outstanding. I agree with what other folks are saying on that. To me, this bullet doesn't get an enforcement, and it's not intended to. But what it does do is, you know, we said repeatedly tonight that we're keep shoehorning a one-size-fits-all solution for a variety of things across the county. This bullet point explicitly says that there can't be a one-size-fits-all solution for the matter of two-hour parking. And I think that's the direction we need to go, in allowing the county, allowing county staff to, you know, do this analysis over whatever period of time that is. You know, I don't, it's not going to happen overnight, it's not going to happen immediately. And maybe that's appropriate, if there's going to be kind of a slow pace to the rollout that this even can take place under, to identify procedures to address enforcement issues, to identify, you know, what neighborhoods this is really appropriate for, and to kind of have that analysis in a slow pace while we figure out what parking looks like in a post-pandemic Arlington. I, I think that's entirely appropriate. And I think it's appropriate to say that there's, I, I don't think it's revolutionary to say that there may very well be parts of the county that respond really well and are appropriate for paid two-hour parking. And there's areas of the county that aren't, you know, susceptible to that in a positive way. And I, I think that this bullet allows for both of those circumstances. So I feel strongly that I will support this, to move us in that direction.
Okay, Commissioner Patel, and then Commissioner Bagley.
I'm sorry, is there a way, is there some parliamentary procedure for us to just call the vote on this? Because I feel like we will just continue debating and talking about where we are. We can just vote.
I think she just did it.
It's called calling, it's called calling the question, which you just kind of-
I'm calling the question.
But that takes a two-thirds vote, Commissioner Patel. And then it cuts off debate, and then, then you have the vote on the actual motion at that point.
But it's, but it can't be debated. So if there's a second on the motion to end debate, then we immediately move on that motion, vote on that motion.
Before anybody makes a second, how about if we go through two more people who want to talk? That's Commissioner Patel, Commissioner Siegel, Commissioner Weir, and then see at that point whether it's time to take a vote on this, and then we can move on. Remember, we can still make motions about enforcement.
I think then, at that point, there would be no need for my calling the vote, if we're going through all of that.
Yeah, that would be correct. And then, if you're okay with that, and Mr. Chairman, I would allow Commissioner Siegel to be the last speaker, since it was technically her motion.
Right. Okay, Commissioner Weir, did you have anything further?
Yeah, I, I am, I'm gonna, no matter what happens to this bullet, I'm going to recommend an additional bullet that will, that, that will read that the county board should adopt the Transportation Commission's recommendation of enforcement for two-hour parking in residential parking zones on par with enforcement of metered parking elsewhere in the county. I hesitate to use the word robust because I don't, calling for robust enforcement is problematic for me. But the, you know, this, this, whether, whether we recommend to include the two-hour parking or don't recommend to include the two-hour parking, the county board is still going to be interested in the question of what of enforcement should we include the two-hour parking? So that, that will be ripe, however we dispose of this third bullet.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Weir. Commissioner Siegel, do you want to have the last word?
Last word? Yes, I was actually going to suggest that the, what I had in mind, the intent of this bullet was to include all impacts, including enforcement. And we could consider adding language, whatever parliamentary hoops we have to travel to do that, including the ability to enforce compliance. However, I think Commissioner Weir's proposal probably is better, more articulate, and it does align us with Transportation Commission. So to those who are nervous about this bullet, I, I think we're going to hear a, a, a second bullet on enforcement, which maybe should be a freestanding bullet, because it's very, very important. That's been a real headache for a lot of people in the county and for many of us.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Siegel. I think at this point, I will move ahead and take on the, the highlighted bullet. Again, I will read it for those who are participating by phone. What we're going to be voting on is this language. The county board should include the two-hour paid parking option on a block-by-block basis, subject to staff analysis of each affected neighborhood. So starting to vote now, Commissioner Weir?
Aye.
Commissioner Siegel?
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes?
No.
Commissioner Guerin's out. Commissioner Morton?
Nay.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger?
Aye.
Commissioner Bagley?
Nay.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
And I will vote aye also. It passes, one, two, three, four, nine, two, three. Can we move on to the next motion? Does anyone want to propose a motion on enforcement?
Mr. Chair, I move-
Or do you want to wrap up with that final bullet?
No, Mr. Chair, I move that we add the, the bullet, the county board should adopt the Transportation Commission's recommendation of enforcement for two-hour parking in residential parking zones on par with enforcement of metered parking elsewhere in the county.
Do we have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Do we have any discussion? I will support this, by the way. I think that that language is very precise, and it does get into the issues of robustness. I think that is, well, full-taken. Okay, lacking any further discussion, we'll move ahead with a, with the vote on it. And Commissioner Weir?
Aye.
Commissioner, oh wait, did we have a second on this?
I seconded it.
Okay, Siegel, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's late, I'm losing it. Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Weir, vote.
Aye.
Commissioner Siegel?
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes?
Aye.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye. Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger?
Aye.
Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. Okay, that passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair?
And we have, yes, Commissioner Hughes?
I have a motion to make before we get to the final one.
Okay.
I move that the county board direct the county manager to remove hour references within section one of the hours of parking restrictions, page 31 of the staff report.
Okay. Let's see. Where, what is?
We need a second first.
Okay, there.
Second?
Well, I'm still trying to find the reference. Can we do that before we start seconding things?
Right, that's what I think what's going on here, is that none of us understand what this is.
I, I'll withdraw the motion and just leave it out there as text at the moment, then, to support this, if that's okay with the chair.
It's fine with me.
Can you repeat the reference?
So it's page 31 of the staff report. It's section one of, quote, "hours of parking restrictions." And the effect this has, if you go to page 31, is it removes the restriction within the administrative guidelines for the hours and limits to residential parking that will be established post this date, and allows them to be exactly the same as they are pre this date. So what this would allow is a 24-hour parking, should the county manager determine that that's the best thing to do? Because the section above would still remain in effect.
Oh, okay, so what you're saying is this is dealing with, where right now, the proposal says the two blocks, the only two blocks you can choose are, what is it, the nine to five and the five to 11? And you're saying that instead of just having two blocks of time, that it should be left to the, essentially the discretion of the county manager to what the time would be?
So there are four current blocks, correct, Commissioner Lynn told me this would remove those, and instead, put the discretion entirely with the county manager. The intent here, as I said earlier in the conversation, is to remove the grandfathering issue, i.e. that there are currently 24-hour zones, whether they're right or wrong is an indifferent question to this. It simply allows for staff to make the appropriate decision moving forward as what is the appropriate restriction on a given block at a given time, if you're going to have an RPP.
I understand, thank you, Commissioner Hughes.
So having explained that, I will make it in the form of the motion so that it can fail, because as all of you know, I have no problem being either the load the center or, or a failed motion, and I do not want us to be here too long.
Okay.
The county board should direct the county manager to remove hour references within section one of hours of parking restrictions, page 31 of the staff report.
Do we hear a second? I think we do not have a second.
I was actually going to second that.
You are going, okay. You're going to second, okay, Commissioner Steinberger, that's fine. Do we want to have any further discussion on this? I think Commissioner Hughes has already spoken to it.
I have a question about it.
Yes, Commissioner Patel.
So, is there, I guess, I mean, shouldn't there be some, if a, if a, if a zone is going to be 24 hours, or if it's going to, shouldn't there be- or if it's going to, shouldn't there be some public comment on what that zone should look like? If we're talking about a block by block basis, we're talking about, I mean, like, shouldn't there be further discussion on this before the staff decides what it is going to be? Does that make sense or no? Am I, and I'm not thinking?
In response to that, I, I was thinking that would be part of the community petition as they were determining if they were going to move forward with RPP. And as you go and route, you know, your petition to enough people on board, I would think that you would also be looking to propose what hours you were suggesting.
The hours that are gen, the hours are always, they always come up through the neighborhood, through that specific block. They're the ones who petition for having the RPP and for what the hours of it would be. It does not originate from staff.
So this is basically, th- this is creating an, another option to eliminate the blocks completely. Is that, is that more, I mean, like, I guess I'm confused.
Mr. Chair, I may?
Yes, Commissioner Hughes.
Uh, Commissioner Patel. So, uh, it, previous to this, and Mr. Grimm could correct me if I'm wrong, uh, staff had supplemental guidance. And since the seventies, there's been innumerable, uh, number of hours of times restrictions established, uh, uh, six to four or, or four to things. You have to read each and every sign everywhere you go. This would create only four options and of broad categories and then narrow to within. So it would also mean that there's absolutely no way to restrict parking between one AM and seven AM anywhere in Arlington, except for those areas that currently already have it because we're grandfathering them in. And so the intent of this is to simply allow each future site of RPP that's established to be reviewed and established on its own merits. That's the intent.
Thank you.
Mr. Grimm has a comment. So, correct me where I'm wrong, Mr. Grimm.
Um, just that the stand.
Commissioner Latony.
Yes, Mr. Grimm, please.
The, um, the standard hours that are here have been in place since, uh, two thousand and five. So, uh, prior to that, yes, there were hours of all kinds of different varieties that were authorized, though seventy five percent of the streets have the original eight to five, Monday to Friday. But these are the standard hours that we have used since two thousand and five.
So what you're saying, uh, Mr. Grimm, is that we already really have this in place right now. And what you're doing is simply re, recodifying what already exists.
Correct.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Steinberger here. I had a, a question on that, if I may follow up. Is there any mechanism, would the, so these would be the only four allowable options for hours? There's no procedure to get something other than those under the proposal or under either the current system or the proposed system?
That's, I think, correct because what it really is, the only gap is from, um, was it eleven at night to eight in the morning? Um, I think that's the one gap that there is, um, whatever that final time is. These four blocks really cover seven days of the week and most of the hours of the day, it's only the wee hours of the morning that are excluded. And I'm not sure there's ever going to be anybody walking around enforcing at three in the morning, whether somebody's legally parked. As a practical matter.
Understood. Thank you.
As you can tell, I'm not going to be supporting this. Okay, um, we have a motion out. We have a, um, second for it. So let's go ahead and take the vote. Commissioner Weir.
Nay.
Commissioner Siegel.
Nay.
Commissioner Schroll.
Nay.
Commissioner Hughes.
Aye.
Commissioner Morton.
Abstain.
Um, Commissioner Patel.
Abstain.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bagley.
Abstain.
Commissioner Peterson.
Abstain.
Uh, Commissioner Sarley.
Nay.
And I will also vote nay. Um, let's see. We have two ayes, five nays, and four abstentions. Okay, let's move on. Um, see the next, um, we have the final motion, um, the final bullet. Uh, Commissioner Weir, are you willing to make a motion on that?
Yeah. So the, uh, I move that the, that the commission endorse the final bullet, the county board, uh, should, um, the county, uh, let me just type it so that it's correct here. The county board should adopt, uh, the ordinance, um, to, I'm going to actually give this for a pause for a second and I'm going to mimic, uh, the, the, um, uh, language that Commissioner Siegel, uh, requested for the prior one. Okay, uh.
Just need a comma after the, the twenty, two thousand, uh, twenty one, twenty, twenty one, a comma.
The comma, so the motion is, uh, to endorse, uh, the final bullet. The county board should adopt the ordinance shown in attachments A and C to the staff report dated January twenty one, two thousand and twenty one.
Thirty one.
Thank you very much. Um, uh, to amend, reenact and recodify Article One, Division One, uh, section fourteen dot two dash seven dot one fines for non-moving violations to address fines for parking in violation of Article Eight of Chapter fourteen, uh, point two.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Schroll. Uh, do we have any discussion? Thank you all for not discussing. Let's move on to our vote. Um, Commissioner Weir.
Aye.
Commissioner Siegel.
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes.
Aye.
Commissioner Morton.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bagley.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley.
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. This one passes unanimously. Um, I, do we have any further motions left for this topic?
I have two more motions. Uh, both will be brief, Mr. Chair. I seek unanimous consent to, uh, correct this reference, January twenty one to January thirty one.
You have, you have unanimous consent on that.
Right. Um, and then, uh, uh, I move that the commission adopt the, um, uh, motion, uh, the recommendation motion as, um, as considered, as a whole.
Right. Um, do we have a second for that?
Second.
Second.
That, that was Commissioner Steinberger?
It was.
Commissioner Hughes, I, I beat, I beat her.
Okay.
Sorry, Jane.
Any further discussion? And I'll strangle you if you do. Thank you. Let's move to a vote for the final, wrap it all up. Um.
Technically, it's a vote on the main motion.
Right.
As amended, right?
Yeah, as amended.
As amended. Okay. Main motion. Commissioner Weir.
Aye.
Commissioner Siegel.
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes.
Aye.
Commissioner Morton.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bagley.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley.
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. It passes unanimously. I think we're done with the RPP for the night. Thank you all. Um, and since this is the only thing on the agenda, thank goodness. Um, let's get the final stuff. First off, I want to, uh, thank you all for being here, for the members of the public who stuck it out. Uh, Mr. Grimm, thank you for sticking it out also and for all of the information you provided through this long, long evening. I think it helped advance the ball tremendously, uh, by you giving us the answers to our questions. Uh, thank you, Ms. Johnson, for helping get everybody corralled here and getting all of the public commenters to be able to comment. That was important. Commissioner Siegel will be representing us at the county board hearing on the, uh, on February twentieth. And I thank all the staff who labored to make this happen and went so smoothly. Thank you, Mr. Wood. Um, and thank all of you. Um, so anyway, um.
Commissioner Latony?
Yes.
Can you just tell me who will be doing the letter?
Um, the letter, I guess, will come to me, uh, Mr. Pfeiffer, if you're still on the line. Um, I guess it'll come to me. I will circulate it, of course, to everybody. We never, of course, we never had a, uh, you know, had subcommittee meetings for this topic. Um, so I, I'll be happy to review it and circulate it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, this is, this is Matt Pfeiffer. Um, just to answer Commissioner Siegel's, uh, question, what I will do is I was planning to circulate the letter, um, amongst any of the commissioners that, uh, offered motions. So, so that you could check your own language.
That sounds good. That'll be efficient that way.
Great.
I'll take the layering worth to do the editing, um, unless Commissioner Weir wants to do it. He doesn't look happy about that. So.
I'm, I'm perfectly happy to help with, uh, uh, you know, the, the portion where we identify, you know, where we go through the motions. I'm, I'm more than happy to help with that. And I'm sending Mr. Pfeiffer and, and Ms. Johnson and, and you, Mr. Chair, uh, that language now, um, as I have it. I, I realized a little late in the game that I probably needed to, to keep track of each language, but we'll, we'll get there.
Thank you. Very good. Well, anyway, um, we meet on Wednesday, seven PM for our recess meeting. Um, we already went through what's going to be on it. And given how late it is, um, again, I thank staff for bearing with us on this, but this is very important to the county board. Um, so I think we really did need to have this discussion. Um, I declare this meeting adjourned.
In recess.
In recess.
Recession. I pulled that back. Anyway, that's why we were, we're in recess until.
Thank you.
Talk on Wednesday.
See you Wednesday.
Bye.
Bye bye.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye.
Thank you.
Well done.